... Dicen han. Zunon kinan, shudha dilne, shwana, zunogoi hon. Iki shindahodilne, tonan, kodo, kado lebe. Iki shedahui ta'hi, ki shwana, zunogoi, ekit ithin, olki ekihona. Zunogoi hon, ben isdahon, masodol, shudigennamasheni hona. Althodahon, masodehona, na'hadahon, shiha hona. Iki chahandah, khene chahadah, zhi. Shudigennamasheni hona. Aron han hona, altho. Sohodzadano, altho behennele hona. Altho bejzelnhele hona. Allahnhtfogohona, miki shulallahsho. Edla ho ben benash, benashneidol, eskan, kwehohlzush deh. Hona da'ab. Ahnchen, kidanne'eh danle hona. Kahlchun danlo, benaneshu dechna. Allahsho danlo hadashin, bi kha'ta la. Eh hon, xabla, na'chabla, na'chabla chahandah, khene, na'chabla chahadah. Bahadat, ekihona, da'el neeni hona. Na'chabla chahal, kineh, na'chabla chahandsozah hona. Soh edahozadana, ne'ne'je. Oh, ahui chetsozadana, benelne'eh hona, shulallahsho, nlenigi. Benle'eh hadashin, da'na, shatakia. Hoda'oi, isdahon, althah, noh, hoda'ei. Hoda'el, dcha'ahlchun, ye'ho, na'chabah, shiha, shudigennamasheni hona. Hoda'at shulallahsho, benashneidol, es, ah, shfohona. La honi, dcha'dah, khene. Edahon, benashneidol, es, badahadlo, pa'iha hona. Aron, miki shulalladahon, ahui tle, ahui chet, benaneshu dechna, isdah hona. Edahon, na'chabla chahon, maslo hona. Eh yudabot meini, dahon hona, miki, eh, ilina, dechna, nlegi hona. Ba'ahlchun hona. Eh pho'ke, benalakhe, da'adatle hona. Dahon hona. Ahui chet, ahui tle, itzada'hi, di kha hona. Miki ke'sin, benne'eh da'ag, ah, dahon ha. Na'chabla chahon, masodol, eh, azah. Aron, ek edah hona, zehel edan, tahaz, khane, dahaz, phohona. Na'chabla chahon, maslo hona, ah, di chahona. Eh ishin, ha'shin, da', arul le'bitzen, da'ati, kha'igi, shida, denne. Edahlchumada, bish, bodol, es. Na'ha, na'dahitoh, kado, ne'ne'je, isla, ma'di, ni kha'tol, es hona. Adoi hona, lab, eh jeydan, eh, bittah, hona. Shandidez, oh, hon, da'akhe. Edahon, xabla chahon, masodol, es hona. Ha'chon. Eh jey, bitzil, na'ha'de, inox, anhon. Ha'da'ol, ne'ido, es hona. Eh ishin, eh, si dozod, joba, phohona, miki dcha'dashneidol, hona. Eh hona, eh, z'ajhon, da'dohtlil, lo, ah, hudi, ne'idi, ah, hudi, ne'ah, hudi, noh, shidai, hona, shudigennamasheni hona. Aron, shi, khaz, eshtfodi, do'ne'eh. Khaz, eshtfodi, do'ne'eh hona. Adoi, ne'ne'je, ad, eh, na'ahlma'di, ni kha'tol, es hona. Adahon, na'ha'ahlchun hona. Gultcha'a, eh, dechna, ish, eh, hona. Eh le'tlo, phohona, benaneshu dechna, gultcha'a, dechna, hona. Edahon, xabla chahon, maslo hona, kiat, eh, gultcha'a, benaneshu dechna, ne'ido, es hona. Yedan, eh, blon, khade, inox, anhon. Ben seke, nleni, do'nan hona, eh, da'at, ekihon, zunogohona, kidah, ne'blan, khade, inox, anhon. Aron hona, ah, shfohona, kweh, eh, da'at, eh, go'hon. Chuidofani, dahal, thro'go'hon. Edah hona. Eh, kav, nlenigi, chet, kha'olnon, khane, inox, anhon. Aron hona. Ch'e'ya, na'dat, thodat, abal, lahdan, eh, ah, na'khade, inox, anhon. Aron, ek edanle hona. Edahon, altho, xabla chahon, maslo hona. Aron, shnat, ah, nlenigi hona, eh, zekna, branch, ajda, innish. Shonala, do'nan, shal, ah, shut, shalast, edah, seke, gehi hona. Aroban, na'dal, nshvan, staff, danle hona. Aron, eh, directors, danle, aj, kev, na'ha, ha'shin, pho'ek, ah, hoda'teh. Edah hona, na'chabla chahon, maslo, ba'ahlchun, eh, dahon. Aba'ga, na'had, aj, dad, chaba, na'chabla, eh, dahon, shiha hona. Adahon, legislative branch, da'i, aj, kuzeh, aj. Na'ha, aj, edlah, shudha hona, aron, shom, shom, mad, o'tla, zehel, da'ach, shudesho, branch, aj, bada'innish. Ne'va honeshin, bada'innis, gehi hona. Na'chabla chahon, maslo, na'chaba, eh, dahon, shiha. Ah, shfohona, aron, na'had, aron, le'ideh, kweh, eh, da'at, eh. Chap, chapter official, ka'na, anh, nela. Devant, eh, land board, da'adat, eh, hona, chutsi, farm board, da'adat. Aboh, niyaz, eh, hona, na'dani, dahon. Edah, altho, xabla chahon, maslo hona. Adah, hoda'ei hon, ah, hon, shehndeh hona, sozadon, kijan, benesneidol, es, shenidon, sheni hona. Ah, tine, eh, hona, da'nsob, me'ideh hona. Hoda'ei, shandad, dohshesh, eh, hona. Da'ei hona, da'ab, sozadon, ah, hon, shehndet, obeh, hon, ne'gi, da'ei, kijan, benesneidol, es hona. Dahon, shi, ba'oh, dechna, eh, hon, shag, da'ki, oh, eh. Eh, da'dohshesh, miki ben, khaz, ne'eh hona, do'les hona. Hoda'at, shudeh, dan do'les, ah, shfodan, kijan, kuzeh, do'les hona, ah, shfodan hona. Yazul, kijat, oh, ne'ido, es hona, althodah, zinki, do'ne'ido, es hona, dahod, eh, deh, hona. Adahon, zehdeh, hona, yazul, kijat, oh, ne'ido, es hona, hoda'at, shudeh, dan do'les hona. Shudigennamasheni hona, hoda'at, sozadon, kijan, benesneidol, es. Kuzeh, na'has, tne'ido, es hona, kuzeh, na'has, tne'ido, kuzeh, na'has, tne'ido, kuzeh, na'has, tne'ido. Thank you, Chair.
Keha, shnanta'ye. Hona, bo. Daniel, shkrona, chadshol, nts, nlegi, shin, chik, he's, da'oh, yel, tvi, oh, koro. Iki shindahodilne, do'ol, kiri, ithin. So. Ashay, introductions, bahol, she's, da'ond, the agenda. RDC members. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, are you on the call? Honorable.
Ah, yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Uh, Chairman Doh, committee members, uh, good morning, Adon, staff, Doh. Ado, um, the, um, colleagues of the Twenty Fourth National Council that are joining us this morning, Yate. Ado, um, the audience that we have. Eh, da'ist, ah, ki, do, kweh, shinkha. Eh, dahitoh, zehigi, eh, do, yat, eh, kro, nlegi, ne'ido, le. Yeah, Thomas Walker Junior, eh, dechna. Anat, uh, kujeh, eh, aj, aj, uh, t'ah, k'ash, it, eh, do, kudo, it, ne'banashah. Shtlak, oh, t'has, nela, b'hlaha, o'tzo, ton, ah, lin, thro', sili, thro'. Na'na, ah, san, to, tsakho, ha'ke. Eh, kud, ah, eh, ah, bas, nela, b'hlaha, ah, eh, banashah, kro. Ado, ah, ton, eh, shenigi, eh, ishin, nshle. Eh, petro, bashischin, thukson, nshche, da'at, eh, do, tadi, shkizin, da'shanale, kud, eh, kro. Kweh, yat, eh, ado, ah, kweh, etzoh, de'zi, nlegi, do, kheh, nshkha, kro. Shetche, Honorable Daniels. We appreciate the prayer given this morning, ah, ideh, ah, t'lat, ban, seday, chis, ah, aj, ot, eh, assi. Ah, nlegi, ta'od, eh, seday, chit, eh, kud, eh, kro. Ah, kro, oh, to, ba'khe, ni, zid, odli. Ado, shin, janoh, tlapi, tle, do. Ah, da'at, eh, nlegi, ta'od, eh, ndah, zibah, kwin'teh. Ado, eh, do, ne'ido, ado, let, ah, yat, eh, endol, ne'eh, aj, kro, to. Eh, khen, do, da'ne'it, ado, ba'dah, kwin'teh, nlegi, shin. Eh, da'dne'it, ado, da'dilne, shosnanda, kheh, kweh, shaw, ah.
Keha, Vice Chair Walker, Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels.
Keha, na'na, kudo, um, chair, kudo, kheh, aron, da'kudo, um, sheta'echi, kudo, Herman Daniels Junior. Ado, eh, shlenigi, petani. Isa'ch, chidi, da'sh, zeh, ash, ka'atzo, eh, da'shanale, aron, da, kweh, etlini, na'kha'it, ne'eh, eh, da'sachi. Wada'at, nenshle, kro, na'ghaid, um, na'tas, ah, o'lsje, thro', shan, thro'od, aron, da'tzapi, ken, eh, banashnesh. Wada'ani, chet, dahon, ne'ido, es, kudo, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels, Honorable Freeman.
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, shnanta'ye, ado, uh, shnata, kiala, for that prayer. Uh, everyone on this call, shetche, Honorable Daniels, so, on the call, you, good morning. Uh, it's a beautiful day in Crown Point, New Mexico, Eastern Navajo Agency, blue skies. Birds are chirping, coffee's brewing, ready to go, make it a beautiful day, shnanta'ye. Ado, um, Che Mark Freeman, the shero, ado, slenigi, to'toni, shlotokia, ani, bashischin. Sanja Kennedy, da'sh, che, arat, tena, b'ne'eh, shenale, represent eight chapters out here in Eastern Agency, Crown Point, ado, na'had, shki, zto, te, ah, the, senti. White Rock, Lake Valley, Herpino, and Nai'ezhe, good morning, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Freeman, Honorable Stewart.
Hey, uh, Rick Nezine, shiha, wala, nenshle, oh, zayt, kachin, bashischin. Senha, bitlen, da'sh, zeh, do, kene, ani, eh, da'shanale, wada'aid, anenshle. Sh'tha'go, chapters, one, ash, neshige, eh, yaha, hogback, sen, wan, ne'neh, mza, upper, frulen, burnim. Ado, new, kum, sto. Yat, eh, benan, shfok, kri, ndatsa'od, gisegi.
Chair, yaha, Honorable Chairman Daniels, so.
Ashi, ha'lan. Uh, yat, eh, jad, shni, odli, do, um. Eh, do, shadune, ches, anu, kweh, gehi. Uh, chentahui, ne'eki, to, kweh, gehi, shi, klat, oh, sa'ad. Ben, ha'dah, oh, eh, gehi, ba'khe, kwin'teh. Ado, eh, yeah, um. Eh, yeah, sen, kene, nslon, eh, kachin, ni, bashischin, kus, kus, shinkas, zeh, do, na'chop, ah, ni, da'shanale. Ado, eh, gehi, si, b'esh, ba'han, sa'an, nenshle, ne'gi, ba'heki, eh, yat, it, khat, na'zh, nela, t'hlaha, de'uis, so, gehi, eh, tsay, bi. Elkan, snes, uh, tsetch, isbi, thro', na'ne'ji. Ado, na'od, iski, shen, nleni. Ado, shin, shkay, bit, thro', to, thro'ch, shen, da'to, tsetra, thro'k, o'le, ado, kensla, kai. Wada'oh, eh, yeah, um, b'esh, ba'han, sa'an, nenshle. Wada'oh, eh, yeah, ado, kweh, gehi. Ashi, ha'lan, ha'dah, oh, ah, kudo, ado, eh, si, kudo, um. Eh, gehi, si, uh, ne'idanne'eh, bikin, da'lt, eh, gehi. Uh, elkan, snes, tsetch, isbi, thro', do, um, na'ne'ji, do. Uh, kat, uh, inke, or, kedat, antar, eh, inke, uli, eh, ado, the name changed to. Na'od, iski, shen, nlen, eh, shko, aj, oh, ne'eh. Kweh, kweh, gehi, um, that will be the extent of my, um, introduction, ado, when presentation time, um, eh, wada'eh. Sub, want, de'esh, uh, kweh, gehi, wada'eh, eh, chen, ha'shit, odli, to, ashia.
Akoshila, kheh, Chairman, so, eh, staff, bahod, shish, Mr. Tahie.
Good morning, Chair members of RDC. Um, thank you for that beautiful prayer, um, Delegate Daniels, it's a great mor, it's a great way to start the morning. My name is Rodney Tahie, I'm Kia'ani, and Sanja Kennedy, and I'm originally from Steamboat, Arizona. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Woody.
Um, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, good morning, yat, eh, ben, shido, hoda'ani, chedah, dechna, she, Teresa Woody, and she had all legislative assistant, nshle. RDC, eh, bitlen, da'shanale, do, trap, ba'han, shlo, kene, ani, I mean. The, bashischin, kene, ani, da'sh, zeh, do, zitna, jene, da'shanale, le, uh, Steamboat, eh, ah, de'go, eh, chedah, na'ha'shin, eh, do, ah, de'go, eh, na'sha. Ado, kheh, Mr. Daniels, zunon, hat, re'ins, and, ado, ah, not, hoda', isnot, ah, in, here, do, yat, eh, ben, Mr. Chair, back here.
Thank you, Ms. Woody, Ms. Siako, from Speaker's Office.
Uh, oh, yat, eh, ben, uh, good morning, everyone on the call, Resources and Development Committee, uh, members, ado, uh, Chairman, is, this, this is Melinda Riso, Siako. Uh, zitna, jene, shlong, kia'ani, bashischin. T'ridjini, da'sh, zeh, do, da'shin, nshle, uh, Legislative Staff Assistant for the Office of the Speaker, kheh, do, yat, eh, ben.
Thank you, Ms. Siako, we also have, uh, Honorable Former Senator Carlisle Begay.
Uh, good morning, Chairman, and Honorable Members of the Resources Development Committee, uh, and staff, and, uh, yes, thank you very much, Chairman So, for your prayer this morning. Uh, I'll be listening, Chairman, I, I'm also on the call with Speaker Damon and Leonard Gorman. Uh, discussing the Council Resolution on the Navajo Nation's Position on Voting Rights. Uh, in anticipation for meetings in DC as well, so I'll be going back and forth, Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Begay. Our LDA, Mr. Tencio.
Oh, uh, kiala, Chairman, uh, yat, eh, shkash, shin, nshle, thod, chini, bashischin, khan, zani, da'sh, zeh. Ash, zeh, da'shanale, yat, eh, yat, eh, ben, Arnold Soddy. Such, uh, RDC, shnanta'ye, good morning.
Uh, thank you. It's, uh, let me go back to Honorable Kia'lin Begay Junior.
Uh, Chairman, uh, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, yat, eh, Chairman, I apologize for getting on late. Uh, yat, eh, shkados, nah, da'shan, ah, gi, uh, RDC member. Uh, koro, so, dah, bad, zen, nlegi, shi, benash, ne'ideh, do, es, kheh. Uh, kudo, shedetje, ah, na'ha, hid, anenshlo, kene, ani, eh, da'sh, zeh, eh, but, ah, it, da'sh, zeh, ado, dechna, ni, da'shanale. Uh, tsat, uh. Lomahn, t'chib, b'g'ap, salan, kane, wad, na'zh, leni, minifan, wada'ei, kudo, uh, t'landa'atle, gehi, ba'tcha, de'sha, so, did, ah, nje. B'dah, shesni, odli, uh, Chairman, uh, good morning, na'na, kheh.
Thank you, Shetella, Honorable Begay. Uh, we also have with us, uh, Mr. Davis Schoffer, from the Office of the President, Vice President.
Good, good morning, Chair, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Oh, yat, eh, shkados, shadune, ado, Resource and Development Committee Chair, the Chair. Ado, eh, hesht, eh, nash, nlegi, members. Ado, ben, na'de, bish, mas, and, isnot, sa'gi, good morning, on this Saturday morning. Gray Hill, da'shanale, yes, and, eh, Cameron. Gray Mountain, ah, the, asahit, le, kweh, gehi, ati, bichne, eh, zeh. Remote areas, lafso, keda, at, nlegi, electricity, be, da'at, nlegi. Eh, b'tre, kreg, odet, former delegates, nela, Mr. Raymond Max, kud, bichna, sh, ah, st'oh. Uh, Hellerin, Tom O'Hellerin, the staff, ado, from, Vechon's Office, they, kud, uh, kiala, ah, need, no, ah, did, eh. I'll be listening in, uh, from time to time. Good morning, and I believe Mr. Leonard Sosi might be on the air too, Chair. Have a good day.
Oh, kheh, Mr. Leonard Sosi.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. Yat, eh, ben, uh, ado, kheh, koro, to, Delegate Daniels. Zonie, eh, shnanta'ye, President, eh, ben, dne'igi, ado, the Vice President, aroban, da'at, shi, lo, ben, ne'end, ne'igi, kheh, nshkha. Ah, ni, eh, la'i, uh, ben, ne'ndeh, k'ei, eda, sozadon, kro, zonie, wada', ah, t'inep, ben, na'dahl, na'ho, kheh. Ado, shedetje, thro', ah, nshne'eh, na'ni, stedz, bashischin, ash, ni, zeh, zeh, na'kha'it, ne'ir, shanale, kro. Ashin, ah, dah, kheh, ishin, be, dah, kher, do, I'll be listening in to, on behalf of the Office of the President, kheh, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Sosi. Um, Mr. Richard Begay. Mr. Richard Begay. Mr. Lester Sosi, from BIA.
Uh, can you hear me now, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I couldn't figure out my speaker phone. Uh, good morning, uh, members of the committee, and, and the public. Um, uh, I'm Richard Begay, um, I'm, that, a tribal historic preservation officer for the Navajo Nation. We oversee the archaeology, historic buildings, burials, sacred places, all across the reservation, and also on, uh, Indian allotted lands. We do a lot of work with BIA, BLM as well. Ado, do, nenshle, ne'eh, thro', ah, nenshle, do, t'ba'ha, bashischin, do, kia'ani, da'sh, zeh, do, t'chini, da'shanale. Ado, le, nas, chidah, li, da'ke, shet, kheh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Begay, kheh, Lester Sosi.
Good morning, Chair, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir, good morning, everyone, uh, thank you very much, uh, I'm Lester Sosi. I'm BIA Superintendent for Eastern Navajo Agency. Yat, eh, kro, ah, nenshle, neshtedz, shin, eh, shi, da'sh, zeh, do, ben, kene, da'shanale. I'm really just here to listen, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel Sage.
Shnai, uh, I got a text from Mr. Sage that the, um, post wasn't allowing him in.
Okay, uh, Mr. Tahie, could you, um, allow, Mr. Samuel Sage?
And, uh, right now, I don't know which phone he's using.
Uh, okay.
Mario, shetche, can you get Mr. Tahie the phone number so that he can be let in?
Oh, sure, sure.
Chair members of RDC, this Zoom meeting is, is open to the public, so participants are automatically allowed in. Um, if Mr. Sage can send me an email or text message, I can send him the direct link and phone number, so that way, he can automatically log right in. active, Chair.
Akoshila, go ahead. Ado, do we have Mr. Brandon Velvis on the call?
Yes, sir. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning to, uh, the committee, and to the public, and other representatives on the phone. Brandon Velvis, Yen Shie, she, uh, Lithuanian, eh, nichli, do, pencil, ni, dachi, eh, bashischin. Um, da'shanale, polish, eh, do, da'sh, zeh, kene, ne'igi. Um, Oho, and Sino, chapter, ba'ash, nish. Um, Community, do, Economic Development Advisor, nichli. Um, thank you very much, uh, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else on the call that wishes to introduce themselves?
Good morning, I'm Chairman, Mr. Robert Begay. Regional Archaeologist for BIA, now for region, I'm just here to listen to you.
Thank you, Mr. Begay, next.
Allottees, eh, 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 k'eh, what is, ah, shananta'ye?
Oh, haditsa.
Eh, k'eh, shle, riknas, ado, Chairman. Aj, RDC, jen, hasan, tarok, ado, b'esh, mas, ah, ndo. Isi, ish, na'andy, Charlie. Na'ghaid, Chaco Canyon, ah, holly, yelo, na'sha. Ado, indet, ta'eh, yat, ah, kweh, iset, zeh, isat, ha'at, ne'le, l'kut, eh. Ado, inden, la'me, de'gi, allottees, eh, do. Eh, do, do, na'kin, lon, ro'shanas, so. Shedetje, eh, ben, na'ch, eh, eh, dechna, kri, kweh. Ns'ov, ben, yeh, eh, eh, uh, ne, ne, ni, t'ha'on, nshlo. Na'ho, ba'ani, nshle. Edah, mi, den, yi, kiri, shanale, eh. Sh'mas, anand, eh, sh'gre, grandma, and eh, b'brother, kro. Ishin, ben, na'lo, kro, eh, eh, k'eh, ish, nalan, nlegi. Ado, indet, ta'eh, eh, eh, la', ish, ke, n'hlil, ah, to. Thro', ha', ndash, ke, do, t'han, es, ah, ne, do, ha'na'ha, ne. Ash, k'ah, zo, eh, ta'li, eh, it, da'sh, ke. Ado, na'ne, na'xtedz, uli, gehi. Na'tan, ne'eh, eh, bashin, chin, da'shanale, bashischin. Ah, kro, wada', eh, eh, at, nenshle, do, wada', kweh, ishi, yah, oh, aj, Chaco Canyon. Ado, pan, shischin, shet, oh, Chaco Canyon National Park. T'is, t'in, shina, k'eh, begi, hot, eh, wah, nizi, do, ben, ha', hot, eh, do. Ado, ne'ba, wah, shen, to, to, has, ha', tina, kui, ha'at, nineteen sixty, eh, na'it, ah, eh, pr'ler, kof, na'iz, be'tcha, niya. Ado, ek, akun, za, deh, holzush. Ag'ul, ah, at, eh, da'shin, eh, eh, na', do, k'eh, da'shin, ba'dis, zeh, do. Akun, eh, eh, ti, kat, asi, ishedetje, di'da. Elkan, ado, indet, dam, kweh, Republican, eh, do, b'det, eh, da'da. Den, ne'bedetje, eh, eh, de'ben, geh, kweh, t'has, do, na'hlus, unye. Eh, k'eh, shananta', n'hlil, eh, ah, n'hlil, kro. T'na't, ah, it, oh, ha'yula, kro, tab, bedetje, kro, eh, da, n'kl, k'eh. Ado, s'atseli, ah, da', eh, le, ha't, zist, ah, na', Lester Sosi. Do, l'ner, Sosi, ju, is'atseli, da'teh. Eh, eh, hot, eh, odli, ado, k'eh.
Akoshila, kheh, Mr. Charlie, ashin, nah, we, do, ah, shen, na'ghaid, kro, ah, li, ah, go, bahol, shi, shko. Ado, shin, k'tna, hadil, na'. Mr. Anthony Begay. Star Six.
Oh, yat, eh, shad, dash, dash.
Oh.
Updates if you have.
Thank you, Miss Pablo So. Next. At the Ashina Stolles, no, Arais Noth, Swayrosh, Nantah. The Benigasahneitleniki, Koro Leadership Meeting, Bidiinno. Nihinandah, Nleniki, Ardo Eastern Decko, Shunnaan, Leisto. Chairman. Neve Ishbahasa Anbitz Anatcha, Chuko Health Education and Human Services Committee. Ki Aja, Elnaj, Ananash, Ioson. Akoh, Ardo Ti Koro Mister Samuel Sage, Do Brandon Velvist, Do Mario Tensio Shin. Attention Shin Koro, Nikilndahalneto Leisto, Sa Shin Koro Nchadahvido. Ahso, Naedede Shkilnoksongo, Eh, Chot Ero. Benigasahneitleniki, Eh, Yaha, At Ti, Den Shin, Di, Ashitla, De, Esli, Do Leish. Chana, Yeta, Ti, Ardo, Alatii, Si Ki, Oil and Gas, Benachichin, Peso. Nihi, Chen, Nanaz, Ennalige, Adja, Naigiz, Benaido, Eastern, Jekehnoht, Iniki. Akoh, Ti, Ri, Asasiitli, Do, Chot, Ah, Nikidatil, Ada, Nikidon, Ni, Go, Koro, Denabnatani, Ni. Tlombe Ishbahasa Anabitz Anatcha, Ki, Resources and Development Committee. Eh, Yaha, Bilhala, Siitli, Do, Neve, Washington DC, Go, Kanakidohon, Si, Khe. Chha, Den Shin, Kade, Yaha, Ti, Ti, De, Elehto, Leish, Ah, Honadi, Khe, Askanro. Ardo, Nle, Jenkitchin, Go, Ne, Shin, Ar, Na Ni, Khat, Do Leish, Akoh. Shidan, Ne, Nohlson, Iniki, Di, Koro, Ba, Asahneitli, Do Leish, Ki, Ar, Eh, Di, Ayeh, Jehovon. Shido, Adde, Jehovon, Has, Adju, Ki, Congress, Do, Senator, Dan, Leniki. Do, Ndal, Nishigi, Bilhala, Ti, Dle, Ti, De, Chot, Eh, Go, Enahot, Ti, Den, Nikidohnobeh, Nikilndahos, Ne. Adju, Kehnoht, Iniki, Ardo, Ti, Chaco Canyon, Benan, Nahas, A, Ki, Ti. Neznaats, Nsat, Chha, Ed, Honzah, Go, Eh, Bitz, Ar, Eh, Buffer Zone, Ha, Neniki. Edo, Nih, Ha, Neniki, Aja, Nihinandah, Dan, Leni, Washington, De, Eh, Chot, Ah, Bahadad, Liya, Do. Eh, Benigen, Nikidatil, Ah, Ki, Sa, Bitz, Adju, Nohlson, Sa, Eh, Bitz, Fez, Nohlson. Akoh, Eh, Shin, Chot, Ah, Shin, Elchianhada, Di, Zeh, Do, Koro, Shin, Ti, Chih, Nchadahvido, Ah, Snid, Do, Leish. Endeta, Di, Koro, Nikilzha, Adan, Leniki, Hjoba, Achosniya. Benge, Naedos, Kidito, Ben Yaha, Doftsi, Ki, Shin, Eh, Hjoba, Hadoftsi, Do, Be, Kilshahodil, Nah, Nlid, Do, Leish. Di, Chot, Ah, Yaha, Koro, Oh, Chot, Eh, Do, Leish. Od, Oh, Chot, Eh, Go, Da, Ti, Ha, Shibiga, Hada, Di, Itno, Ran, Da, Itzi, Chota, Eh, Di, Oh, Shin. Ne, Koro, Nih, Akoh, Eh, Ada, Oh, Ben, Kilkodish, Ne. Sunah, Stanitli, Do, Nchaltshin, Koro, Nchinnahas, Tchantira. Di, Ri, Kada, Alatii, Snshli, Do, Leish, Da, No, Nchaltshin, Nchadahas, Si, Ki, Shin, Shob, Benachin, Eldo, Nan, Tkeniki. Bilik, Eda, Di, Leges, Do, Chot, Ah, Mahat, Ah, Ya, Nyadas, Kilani, Nihinandah, Eda, Ns, Ngo. Be, Shot, Nas, Go, Chai, Ah, Shin, Di, Ye, 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 Int, Id, Do, Leish, Nlid, Do, Leish. Chot, Endi, Di, Shin, Hjoba, Da, Chahnits, Ngo, Shin, Koro, Kilndahodil, Ne, Do, Kilshahada, Di, Itzi. Akoh, Eh, Ti, Benigasahneitlen, Akoh, Ti, Abdena, Pighe. Akoh, Shunnaan, Leniki, Shidat, Do, Shil, Kilshno. Eh, Shin, Koro, De, Id, Shil, Nlid, Do, Leish, Anabog, Ben, No, So, Do, Aja. Um, Yel, Koro, Nikhi, Han, Eday, Lehe, Ki. Akoh, Eh, Shin, Se, Koro, Bar, Do, Ahso, Ahso, Shin, Abden, Nikhi, Eda, Rahadol, Zila. Shunna, Ashina, At, Nsh, Ah, Do, Leish, Di, Koro, Chaco Canyon, Bilhaz, Ardo, Buffer Zone, Ha, Neniki. Ardo, Washington, Han, So, Go, Shin, Bedet, Eh, Do, Aja, Nikidane, Ke, Rahof, Iniki. Ti, Nikidatil, Ah, Ki, So, You have the floor, Um, Onabog, Daniel So, Shunna. Oh, Acheha, La, Ninhandah. Ardo, This is, That, Dun, Didn, Behi, Ki, Uh, Resource and Development Committee. Oh, Isosin, Naan, Staf, La, Ande, Ardo, Quaghi. End, Akon, De, Quaghi, Ben Yeho, Quaghi, It, Un, Chukon, Sendo, Nish, Do, Quaghi. So, Ish, Adha, Nis, Sendo, Leish. Nih, Zanne, Sa, Yirwana, Has, Ades. But, Eh, Zel, Do, Nda, Do, Na. Nih, Zanne, Ah, It, Ah, Un, Zuno, Ke, Chada, As, Ardo, Ah, It, Ah, Quaghi. At, So, The, Hadaysan, Do. Um. At, Eh, Nas, Akon, Den, Lot, Edo, Shidan, Ne. Nli. Belgonis, Nez. Arde. Edo, Shidan, Ne. So, Eh, Oh, Sa, Ed, Ed, Ah, Oh, Yeah. Eh, Ades, Ke, Dhat, Do, Kudje. Setelbi, Thodo, Na, Ne, Ji, Ardo. Now, Diski, Shindlin. Nih, Zanne. Chot, Adju, Ke, Dhat, Iniki, Eh, Bretso. Naan, De, Chie. B'Yilit, Ah, Eh. Chadat, Chi, Ardo, Kho. Nda, De, Na, Oh, De, Eh, Be, Tachotjol. Ardo, Ti, Nchch, Choya, Shonid, Oit, Ini, Eh, Tachotjol, Ilhata, Has, Si. Akoh, Eh, Quaghi, Hjoo, Nchabam, So, Ke, So, Hjoo, Nchabah, Oh, Nohlson. Di, Kujanai, Ye, Zech, Has, Adja, Do, Ah, Si. Um, Let's see, Hjoo, Eh, Be, Has, Si. Belgonis, Nez, Bo, Ho, Ntino, Torion, Bo, Ho, Ntino, Do, Pentado. Eh, Chot, Ah, Eh, Ya. Ne, Nikidane, Be, Shindah, Ji. Ardo, Asho, Kintah, Do, Tashna. Ni, The, Ka, Eh, Bretso, Elke, Na, Zinkle, Ke, Naan, De, Chi, Le. Ardo, Ul, Chha, Oh, Elchen, Asho, Hjoo, Ardo, Nan, Da, Hun, Ka, Oh. Nli, Ul, Chaj, Abitdo, Ke, Le. At, Kin, Bitz, Ah, Nda, Has, Chon. So, Ah, Chot, Ah, Nli, One, 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 Naan, Tash, Ah, De, Chot, Ah, Eh, Nikilthah, Ah. Chaa, Ad, Eh, Ya, Ti. Kinar, Koi, De, Chot, Koyeh, Jehovon, Ni, Ki, Do, Chot, De, Jehovon, Ni. Nar, Chos, Wuchin, De, Ni, Ho, Bang, Eh, Khe. So, Ah, Abdelgonis, Nez, Ki, Ah, Nihinal, Edo, Nihmas, Han, Blaskwin, Ni, Han. Ah, Chai, Ah, Da, Nchabam, Da, So, Don, Ke, Di, Ni, De, Ki, Eh, Benach, Ni, De. Oh, Eh, La, Ardo, Abey, Ni, So, Ki, Ah, Abeh, Nili, Ni, Ki, Ah. Ba, Panit, So, Ni, Ki, Ah, Eh, Kho. Chaa, Eh, Ke. Oh, Quaghi, Eh, Ya. Chot, Ja. Hey, Ah, Ni, Aja, Has, Un, Eh, Ki. Oh, Di, Kho. Belgonis, Nez, Setelbi, Tho. Now, Diski, Shindlin, Do, Na, Ne, Ji. Do, Uh. Rincom, Marcus, White Horse Lake. Aja, Sto. Alat, Mi, Di, Gida, Deit, Ki. Do, Ah, Sa, Eh, Ki, Tachol, Taha, Ki, Eh, Gida, Deit, Ki, Ta, Gada, Ah, Si. Che, Eh, Ya, The, Kui, Shi. Zhe, Eh, Ya. Do, Nala, Stane, Nala, Stine. Eh. Bah, Dhas, So. So, Eh, Ke, Na, Eh, Tan, Nda, Has, Chai, Ardo, Di, Shada. Akon, De, Shin, Den, Ni, Ki, Benach, Eh, Quaghi, Ni, De. Ardo, Quaghi, Eh, Ya, Chato. Ni, Ni, Koi, Ki, Ni, Ant, No, Fees, Lo, In, Ad, Elche, Neniki, Eh, Benach, Eh, Kode. Ande, Ant, Da, Di, Choe, Eh. Adan, Ni, De. Akoh, Quaghi. Oh, Eh, You See. So, Eh, Di, Chaco Protection Act, Eh, Ki, Eh, Eh, You See, Eh, De. BLM, Field, Ne, Losa. Eh, Ya, Bedet, Deit, Ki, So, Eh, Ya, Public Land, Ed, Ne. So, Eh, Washington, Gida, Deit, Ki. Ah, Chai, Shin. Registered Voter, Dun, Leniki, Across the United States. Eh, Bitz, At, Eh, Ki, Public Land. Go, Eh, Quaghi, Ke, Yaha, Chats, Neli, Ki, Nan, Aga, Ayoson. Ardo, Hashin, So, Eh, Ya, Be, Is, Ah, Ni, Tal, Ya. Ardo, Neznaan, Nah, Ha, BBLM, Field Office, Ki, Resource Management Plan. Andash, Ni, Do, Leish. So, Chot, Sa, So, Chot, Eh, Chot, Ad, Eh, You See, Benach, Ah. It's, Ah, Shi, Shi, Zen, Iniki, Eh, Two Thousand and Three, Yan, Ta. Eh, Lot, Is, Lee, La, Sa. Two Thousand and Three Resource Management Plan. Akoh, Chai, Shi. Kudon, Navajo Nation, Iniki. B'Ji, Eh, La, Do. Eh, Man, Alia, Eh, Ki, Nikil, Ah, Akoh, Choto, Ni, La. Ardo, Chis, Eh, Ya, Chato. Uh. Ye, Chedash, Nez. Ardo, Two Thousand and Eleven, That, Ah, But, Yen, Now, The, Hadaysan, Ah. Ande, Eh, Eh, Ya, Resource Management Plan Amendment. Chot, Ah, Eh, Ni, Ka. Chaa, Bul, Ya. Two Thousand and Three, Yan, Ta, Eh, Ardo, Chai, Da, Yaha, Chita. Oh, Shin, Dear Tribal Leader, Well, Ye, Go. Ni, Ki, Do, Den, Ni, Denabe, Do, The Chapter Houses, Between, Padaliah. Ardo, Chai, Chai, Da, Eh, Yeh, Chita, Akon, De, Quaghi, Counselor, Ki, Eh, Eh, Quaghi. Eh, Chita, Do, Ardo, Nat, Ah, Eh, Ya. Denala, Mister Samuel Sage, Was The Main Plaintiff. Oh, Ta, Eh, Do, Viga, Ta, Do, De, Ni. And He'll, He'll Relay His Own Story On That One. Akoh, Quaghi, Nchabah, Oh, Nohlson. Amendment, Alia, Eh, Ande, Chade, Da, Ah. Ardo, Ah, Ah, Ni, Do, Eh, Nat, Ah, Do, Ah. Choko, Do, Ni. Ardo, Sto, Eh, Ya, Di, Uh. Tak, Historical Preservation Protection Act, Well, Ye, Eh, Ki. I, I Can't Remember If That's The Proper Name. So, Eh, Ya. Koyeh, Jehovon, Ni, Ki, Yen, De, Chi. Ardo, Benach, Eh, Dischine, Da, Ande, Quaghi, Os, Ah. But, Eh, Jehovon, Ni, Ki, Ato, Ande, Di, Ah, So. So, Eh, Kho, Ni, Di, Be, Lunt, Abit, Ke, Ato, Da, Ni, Ta. Akon, De, Quaghi, Oh, Gida, Hadaysan, Ah, Da. Eh, Koro, Three Chapters. Like, You See, Elnaj, Um, Counselor, Oh, Ho, Ntino, And Torion. Eh, Don, Ke, Chot, Eh, Da, So, Da, De. Nihia, Kode, Ah, Si, Ni, Kena, Alte. Over Four Hundred Wells Are Approved For This Now. Four Chapter Area. Bawan, Shin, Da, De, Li, Esh, Shin, Akon, De, Do, Chha, Choo, Oh. Ni, Ke, Ni, Kena, Alte. Ardo. Um. Akoh. Di Amendment, Eh, Do, Don, Ke, Chot, Eh, Da, Dear Tribal Letter, Eh, Do, Chadah, Ni, Eda. Ardo, Quaghi, BLM, Da, Ni, Ka. Ardo, At The Same Time, Pinion Pipeline, Quaghi, Ande, Is, Anatcha. Di. Lybrook, Don, Le, Bakapur, Don, Le, Gal, Chu. Pipeline, Do, Nih. So, Eh, Ye, Go, Asah, Siitli. Ardo, Eh, Benach, Eh. More Than Ten Scoping Meetings Were Held. Because, At, During That Time, Bi, Eh, Xha, Ja. Tato, At, Chha, Beach, Ah, Na, Ardo, Leish, Yan, Xha, Ja, Shon. Und, Eh. Um. Le, Shiprock, De, BLM, Scoping Meeting, First Scoping Meeting, Schedule, De, Da. Ari, Yaha, Kende, Ah, Si, Science Fair, Nhando, Eh, Quaghi. Hosters, Da, Nah, Snal, Bit, De, By, Yagi, Eh, Calm, Yet, Da, Do, Si. So, Chot, Ah, Eh, Ho, Ah. Und, Eh. Uh, B'tile, Chiliyazi, Bay, Bitz, Benhass, Si, Di, Eh, Do, Chot, Eh, Da. Chai, Shi, Eh, Nchash, Twi, Ni, Zani, Chai, Shi, Quaghi, B'Ji, Eh, Do, Ni, Do, Quaghi, Eh, Di, Ki, Ta, Ban, Sis, Ke, Do, Ni. Ni, Shin, Ya, Kode, Ban, Si, Ke, So, Hjoo, Eh, Bay, Il, Ke, Ki. Eh, Di, Eh, Ande, Ni. Ardo, Eh. Uh, Chiliyazi, Yaha, Si. You Guys Came In Here. You Didn't Say How You Were Gonna Conduct The Scoping Meeting, You Just Asked For Permission. Akoh, Quaghi, Eh, Do, When We Have A Meeting And We Have, We Don't Just. Put It Down On Paper, We Let The People Talk. So, Eh, Quaghi. And The First Young Lady Spoke Up, BLM. Ah, Eh, Hat, Ishi, Hosters, So, Ah, About Equipment, Eh, What Should They Use? And I Really Come In, Um, Agency Superintendent, Esther Sosi. We're Gathering BLM Up. Ah, Ni, Do, Chot, Eh, Da, She, De, Ni, Do, The Next, De, Da, Shin, Eh, Ya, Nli, Word For No Chapter, De. Ah, De, Eh, Ya, BLM, Allowed. Verbal Comment. Ardo, Eh, Nli, And The Main Thing, With The Focus Was Pinion Pipeline. Ardo, Nle, Window Rock, To, Bah, Ho, Ntino, At The Museum. Chai, Shi, Kent, La, Our Young Navajo Folks That Were Up In Standing Rock. Ashin, Oh, Eh, They Came Back Down, Ande, Ar, Nchili, Yain, Da. Ardo, Quaghi, Ke, Chata, Si. Somewhere Starting At Nine O'Clock All The Way To, To, Like, I Think It Was Like Close To Three Thirty. That Next Monday. BLM. Denied The Pinion Pipeline Permit. Akoh, My Comment To That Official Is. If, Was It, If Economically Feasible For The Developers On This Day, Why Wasn't It Economically Feasible At Their Application? Start Eighteen Months As Late, The Pinion Pipeline, Bah, Win, Oh.
They found a different way to transport their oil down to Artesia and on into East Texas. At the time, there was several other fracking companies that were in the area. WPX bought them out, so they were the main operators. We've heard all this stuff about ten or twelve semis headlight to taillight on the narrow dirt roads. And one driver who happened to be chapter official came and said, hey, I can't get the kids to school on time. These trucks don't allow the buses to go by. I'm not gonna get into the oncoming lane for twelve trucks. I'm not gonna endanger my kids. And all we've been asking for is respect the community. We got many, many people that have to go to dialysis four times a week, five times a week. And guess where that dialysis are? It's now at Diflir or Farmington. And these community roads are the connection. So, Quaggy. And there's five schools that operate their bus systems in that area. But it has multiple impact. The main thing, the dust from the truck traffic. The other thing we started doing was to establish baseline data on the air quality. We got some money on our own efforts, on our own pleading to gather air quality and the differences. So those are put in a document called HIA, A B I S, leave it short. And it was a research approved by the Navajo Nation Human Research Review Board. And it was presented, the final results were presented. And their directive is share this document with all decision makers. And so far, we haven't, at Hess, we haven't scheduled the presentation. We would like to also take it to Resource and Development and to and the highest air quality, the highest numbers of um, hydrogen sulfide and related propanol gases. They were the highest. There's five wells across Highway 550 from Lybrook School. It's a K eight school that currently has an enrollment of about sixty-eight students. When the air stream is right, pervades over that particular facility. The other part is we got monies to get air monitors. And I remember about eight homes that they had to have electricity for these air monitors to work. An air monitor inside their house, an air monitor outside their house. In twenty eighteen, I think it was May, on the national air quality showed purple over the Four Corners area. That morning, we were in the community. And Sam texts and says, I got a text from one of the residents. It's purple. What do I tell him? And the main recommendation was leave your house for three or four hours. When the air starts moving, then you can come back. So that's what is a day-to-day occurrence. And that's what I mean. He's done that. You guys woke up to clear skies, no dust in the air, no foul smelling gases pervading into your living room. And so this is what counselor, chapter residence, and it's going into Oahu and Fino. And it's gonna go into Pueblo Pantano. This resource management plan from the Farmington Field Office. This is what we're dealing. And we're finding out that the latter part of twenty twenty, there was many, over twenty-five hundred new applications for permit to drill in that area. So we're talking impact. And to get back to this Chaco protection, those circles that are connected. Reason that we were against it was, hey, do an amendment to include our chapters. We want an amendment. But the main thing that we kept quiet on it is because these three inner circles that are connected. Does the Resource Committee know how many acres that is? It's three million seven, uh, three million five hundred and forty-one acres. And the five to ten mile, the ten mile to five mile buffer around every of the circles is like, okay. And by opposition, the page six, I think it was, on that Chaco Protection Act language on passage and signature of the president, at the time it was President Trump, right of ways would be granted for water, electricity, roads. When you reduce it, I don't know what the impact of reducing the ten mile to five mile, how many acres that is. I don't have that number. But the main thing is those folks that are living in those semi-circles. Let me remind you, it goes all the way from Naiyisi toward Lake Valley, toward White Rock, toward Defenti, Crown Point, Little Water, Casamaro Lake, and back to parts of White Horse Lake and the good part of Pueblo Pantano. You're affecting our people's ability to get right of way for electricity and waters and community roads. That's the consideration. We have one chapter resolution that says, uh, ten mile buffer. And so the other part in this whole gathering of documents, FEMA put together a document that shows where Manca scallop shale deposits are. And guess what? Their highest south of counselor toward Pueblo Pantano and east toward Oahu and Fino. And then it narrows down to a point south of Naiyisi. And we're outside that, that particular act that our NABI resolution talks about. And when there was a charge of a conflict of interest, I recuse myself because I wanted this day where I could talk about it with the rest of the folks. It is and from our area, we know there are sacred sites outside that three mile or the ten mile buffer. And we all know, some of us grew up to hear the stories that you go to Chaco. About within sight of the chapter house, there's a it's all connected. Landscape protection, cumulative impact. See one well over here, its effect, and another well within a mile. Hey, I've been impacted. One of the times that I was taking a route within counselor chapter. On the passenger side. My little frontier, my side mirror on the passenger side was bumping that dirt. Where I couldn't even get out. What do you mean back up? That's one incident. And I'm sure they're treated like that. Because I have personal experience with that. So I know it occurs with our community residents. And some of the folks, they don't experience that. They've never seen it. And so that's where my passion, that's where I have to say something. So that's, and to this day, this is where we're at. We know that BLM can make a decision at a moment. Twenty fifteen, October, Resource, the Farmington Field Office manager, I can't even recall her name. She was just on the job with two weeks. And the three chapter presidents were there. Fifteen wells, Quaggy, north of Oahu and Fino. That's where community people live. Her name was Victoria Barr. Guess what? She canceled those fifteen wells right on the spot. So in that aspect, we know that the BLM can react. But guess what? It didn't last long there at Farmington Field Office. Last time I heard, she was sitting in a closet office in another field office. As we move, you know, it's from twenty fifteen to now, this is what we're dealing with. And what the folks in that Chaco protection circles is very different from what we're dealing with over here. And so in that aspect, we're asking that there be consideration from our lobbyists, from OPVP's office, from the Washington office, and RDC. This other message. And the thing that, the most recent was the President Biden's executive order. Yes, it talks about the protection area, but the second, the other part of that executive order talks about landscape evaluation, landscape protection. And part of that statement is honoring the Chaco process. And that Chaco process, they're talking about changing tribal consultation. Tribal consultation, we pushed for that. We want changes to what the federal government calls tribal consultation. Navajo Nation is a three branch government. The council is the governing body. NABI powers state positions for the nation. That's where we want tribal consultation to involve the community people, the residents, and the chapters. But the base part is community people. And they're the ones that have to build the fire in the mornings. We know that they had to get up this morning. They had to go break ice for their sheep, for their cattle, for their horses. We know that they put out hay. We know they put out grain for them. And they came and their animals are precious, part of their livelihood. Before they even started cooking for themselves, they made sure their animals were fit. They made sure they had water. The main part is all these roads are being damaged. There was, in some of the work previous to twenty fifteen, BLM, in a settlement, did a, an agreement was signed off by the BLM that the roads would be improved to what is called gold standard roads. Gold standard roads are basically what exists in the Forest Service roads. They're elevated, they got drainage, they got gravel. And so far, none of those roads out in the counselor, Oahu and Fino area and in the Pueblo Pantano area are not with that gold standard road. That's our issue. And what's really the tough part is over on this Farmington Field Office, we're still doing consultation on the Historic Preservation Act, Section 106. There's a draft programmatic agreement. And basically, we're saying, don't sign it, don't sign it. Because these other issues are not resolved. And, but guess what? On this other site, Rio Perco Field Office Management Area, all three chapters are split between that management area. And Farmington, or Rio Perco Field Office, they approve Ford exploration for fifty wells. And right now, I can't recall how many they already drilled. But guess what? BLM and FEMA approve the roads that goes south of counselor to intersection of N forty-six and four seven four. To go to that east area, north of Oahu and Fino. Our residents endured more than two hundred semi-trucks in a day for a period of time, even when there was snow on the ground, even when it was raining. Two school buses from Huber Independent School District. Their front ends were ruined because of the deep holes in those roads. And I haven't heard from the Diflir School, Lybrook School, or the other schools yet. So the impact is great. And guess what? We have an individual that signed off, basically told, and the chapters were objecting and saying, don't go forward with those fifty wells. But guess what? Somebody from the Historic Preservation says, by their signature, they went forward with it without no input to counselor chapter, without no input to Oahu and Fino chapter. You know, in December, when I went out checking on community residents, how come you approved it? And I get the part of it. It wasn't me. And so that aspect of consultation, on our own, inside Navajo government, we have to include the Navajo people. And not only just the chapters. And so it has multiple effect, it has multifaceted effect. It doesn't just talk about oil and gas development, it the health, the safety of every segment of the population.
That's it, she oh eh. A dabity, neh, na so't ayun neech ah, nee, 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 fana khae. Eh did eh ya'st hingot, ahnjo no' be'st' tashilne, Steve Hinkie. Ahro'shtehot eh'shriju. Hingona lha' prilagana, nde shada ahte'wni yahat no' Dave Evans, or ye'na ting'do do. Do'ilten da. Ahon's on. Yigid ah't ishli'chada do'nim git abet ishli'chun ahro at' lo'ida kodi'te. No' behausi'ta. And ah do, rode ishli'chun, ne'na't an'la'apke'ya'ahod ahli'ya'ah, ahro'shteh o'sna' rocha. Ahhot ah. And that's not good eh, eh. Um. Don't hit me smart on shenike eh, la'chin ta'z ahda. Nixpa dahozan do dahohone. Eh kodi nihe'ani k'ainlingi la'chu'kho'egi ke'da'te. Do la'chu'kho'ana'm shu'deli'irod, be'ina' deli'ne. Di k'ho'san nariyana'sne, ge'it' zat' ah'ani go'hot ahni he'lna'ho'ah. Na'ro at'hin'i ke'it' zat' ye'go'ani k'ainlingi yahsa'ahllo. K'ro ban. Ba'banda'idi'ilki'do, ban'asbe'de'ini ghi'lo. He'shing' ah'ach'ano't jahdi'ke'di ke'navaho Department of Transportation. Ah'ach'elcho. Do ay'isidoya'axhunra'salini di'himend onni shi'ge. Ahla'ta'ha'tanid'ari kuiya'ha'shin'hot eh'winda'ahda. Oh chapter'dan da'khatohah'shin'. Nk'ho'at'hin'i he'shing' isi'hot eh. Di ka'ahhot ah'ana'da hat'ah, di ka'ahhot ah'ani k'e'yahsa'ahllo. Ye'ego ye'neechi yash'thi. Nt'ing'do don'da ban'ta'edan he'it'ne, di ah'ach'belak esala. Dabity no' oh, eh kho'egi't edoya'axhunra. Di tribal consultation ye'it' zat' ah'ani. Edi kui'go'shin'. Zat' ahron he'lna'ho'ani ne'te. At'ahn she'ch'oda'ana'shto' be'ke'di nde'ta'na'lsos. Ah'da'li ne'tle, nah'han'na'ach'eh. Me'aps'ta'ba'kha'ol, nda'Washington belayjigid eh ya. Ah'ach'got eh ya ay'is'i ya'da'halinatle. Di k'ya'ala'at'ne'tsigi he'di gishin'eh do. Eh dip'indat'innis. Do'da'ani ra. Uh, Fimo de, eh do'to'wat'ahni he'li'ishtan ille'ta. Ahre eh'ani he'da'ltz'thani. Ay ay em de. Bod'el he'ltahotoh'sne, di zo'n he'ltshutahotoh'ahstikho'egi. But ah'ber'na'ret'innis, i'bit'zeni horl'na'ta'ani, ahro kadah'ah'ach'iltkha'hot. Do n'chabi'gah'ta, ta'no't oh'na'ach'eh. Ko'ahre't anle'de ba'ach'ghah'inda'ahre't oh. O't o't oh, at'ahn he'da'idi'lo. Ahhot ah'ot eh. Di ah'ach'belagana'sne'ach'ke'da'ani n'ainlingi, n'shki'ainlingi. Do'sh'ze'nyan ay'is'i ahrona'ghah. Nk'ho'ah'ach'be'zh'ido shet'sh'ze'ya'ach'da'ainlingi la'ank'eh'te. Ah koda'no'ya'da'halinah, ay'sidoya'axhunra't oh. Di chada'st'chazi oh'hat'ekot'antlch'un da'no. Eh't'ani hot eh'sh'ngali'ana'sne'ge'da air monitor. Ah'ach'. Ah'ta'iliya. Eh k'ho. Do'n ch'egoh. Bod'ehzi ye'ilo. Ahdo k'ost' ah'it'ata'ilt'oh. Isht'aa'kho'hot ahnedit, ah'han'yan ch'hlshing'hot, shin'oh'hat'ekot'antlch'un. Eh yo'anna'illch'i hadayi illch'i eh'shin'. La'deli'ne, do'adabity ne. Eh k'ho. Ayot'ich'eh'winda'ta'edilto. Eh k'ho eh air monitor'ya'eh ah'ach'illchi'le'ts'hite. Ahre'ta'halinah'ala'de ne, shere'k'ho'san sanali'ya'horl'na'san lew. Chada dochkha'ahl'sana chi'he'el, chi'ti'he'el, chi't. M'khot'ah, t'ahn'da'ahhot ay'ya'da'halinah. Do ahro. Eh, ahhot ah'ni he'lhkui'do ah'lo, ni'he'lah'ho't eh ro'it' zat' ah'ron he'it' on'ani'te. Ahro'hot ah'ni he'lhon'ne'te. Di Washington belayj'ch'ha't'et eh ya'hot ah'ban'ta'edil. Ala'at'skoe'ya. To'ho't ada'ani'da't ahnedit o't 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 o'ta'az'ah'eh. Da'ah'wat'he'sto' to'zo'oh. Le'he'da'idi'gizto' he'ta'la'ah'ago. Eh yo'ha'ta'st'chazo'yo' dah'holch'un. Eh k'ho shing'ot'sek'eh. Di'jin don'wo'taan horl'jushonle chapter'de chingo. N'wo'da'hadi'ahhot ne'zna'ro'ra't it eh la't'at'at'ekot'lo'tch'egah'hot chapter'de. Ah ishtan no'hat'ekot'. Holch'un'tle, ha't'ani ha'na'illch'i hadayi holch'i. Ahro't oyahan'ch'edi'lo'hot'innah'hot'ahnedi ahre'ha'ke'to'na'ahl'eh. Do'hot ah'ni he'lh'ha'za'ont eh. Eh k'ho. Eh'dan he'lpahozan do, zo'n ch'bo'an ts'ok'his. Ashin'ani pe'so'eb'ta'ho'ne'ne, nded' on'zah'ach'it'at'hin'ekot'eh ya. Ay ta'nten'tle. Eh k'ho'sto', eh'dand. Ahla. Ahre'bit'enda'ili'eh'ekid o't ah'te, bit'enda'ili'ego'te. K'ho eh. The start of the pandemic ya'tan. One of the industry oil and gas company letters ne'ch'ing'de'ila. An'ad'shin'gish'ed'letters la'she'el'wat'p'lhhai'je'p'lh. Do'n'de royalty payments nda'hali'eh'ek adon'de'ili'ed'ado'le'ta'no. Start of the pandemic da'no, ne'ch'ed'a'ila. Ahro be'ke'dit. At'eh, ta'ron, he'llishtan na'ali'ya'da holla. Uh, start at'inde'tla. Eh't'ahn'da'ahhot eh. Da'ti b'na'lot'ch'esh'ido. Uh, p'lhhai'je. Pipeline do la'ha'ot'at'at'ol'tch'asna'ahl'ch'ha'pan'ye'ah, oh exploratory da'ni ya. But it's usually a full-fledged fracking. Ay b'na'don hishy'de'ili'ida. Eh k'ho'sht'ana'da n'chan'ada'ichih kad'e'ten. Nded'ah khot'ati no' k'ho'eh hot eh'sht'anh'shik'el'hlshinyeh. Ahro'ani n'ch'asht'huin'. Hu'idosan'yn zengit ay'isit on'he't'anna'illte. Last week's ta'inn'lo. B'ena'nan't i'erat eh ta'ana'da na'ho'hot'eh'ya. Eh k'ho eh'it' zat' ah'ke'de. Isht'huin'ch'ach'el'ho'hol'jush't ah'kui'go'shin'ta'ro'le't ah'hl'behuzan. Ye. Eh kho'egi'n he'la'ho't ada'no'hat'ekoya'axhunra. Eh k'ho'san'at'ain'wan'san'at'ani no'hlshing'ed'axhunra di'be'mi. Uh, be ban'an'ho'sh'khan'di az'zo'oh. Ban ts'ok'his zat'ani chi'az'zo'oh ban'an'ho. Ch'ago. Inde'ta'ahda'be'ke'd'na'ch'ka. Ahro't ah'oh'alt'ho'st'at'adan neh'ho. Be'lan'da'iyots'leh't axhunra'sh'p'nan't'ain'no'hlshing'i. Di hot eh. Ahro n'le'ch'ha'hol'jusha'da't se'bi. Thani. Dan'lin'igi n'nh'ha'ek'ha'chapter'de. Di't'ah'sa'ha'eh'hot'ah'do'hot'at'ati no' ban'ek'ha'egol'szam'ni ting'do do bi'gah'te. Ah eh'sha'na'le'tlo' shin'edah'nosun, cha'oh shin'edah'nosun. B'da'iyots'ni'ho'ni k'ha'do'tja. Do'tan he'di'nid, eh b'na'ch'eh'sh'nal'ed'oh. Tcheh, do'do na'ken'elt'ena'ne eh'hot'ah'p'lt'at'ik'hae. Di'ch'ing'do'di'kui'shin'nen hihi'kha'la'k'ana'da, ah'ch'ka'ha. Eh k'ho, di k'ho'rit'ne't be'ke'yahsa'ani ke'bi'yeto. Al'eh'hal't'or'yeto'n la'ba'ban'ahan'ni ho'bit'enz'lag'eh do ban'de'edil. Ahla eh'ach'ani k'e'beda'de'ti. Ki'ani k'e'ay'ta'peh, ta'peh. Ta'bo'hol'loh'nh'na'ch'ahan'eh'oh't eh, la'shin'ta'sit'ao'ts'ha. Nt'ing'do don'da ban'ek'ha'ya'do do'ho't eh'ke'be'mi, na'ch'ahan'eh'oh. Eh k'ho. Nihe'eh'ya, di ke'yah'ekid eh'ya az'oo't ol'ni'lt'ani'tch'un't ah'sa'ha'te. N'sh'ta'it ah'nden'z'egan'na'idi'won'ho'nah'hae. Te'na ting'do do'be'sya't eh'ta'esh'ep'esh'te'ta'Washington belayj'ek'ena'at'leha'k'ho'ne'be'egas'ina'k'ha'ndi'eh'gon'no. Do't ay'eh'ta't'lt'chazi ke'yah'ni'illch'un. S'el'ni'illch'un'zen'ob'han'ni he'lna'ha'zen'ne. Di ay'sh'ini'le, hot'ahnedi'eh'hot eh. Eh k'odi tribal consultation ge't ahro. An'hit eh'ani he'lhkhan'ne'eh. N'le'khot'et chapter nah'ha'za'ahre community n'lingi la't'oyay'alkhi'oh. Ahla eh b'na'go'eh. B'dat' on'ny'sto' ahro be'ke'de eh di'ah'de. Di'kha'ek'ana'hot'edil. Eh'hot eh'shtan. Di't'ay'is'ep'na'dis'sh'ningi. An's'ts'is'iyan tan'ah'ho'nezna'sna'ch'ha'hot'at'eh. Sh'mas'ani'ya'do shat'eh. Le'na'lyeh'eh'bah'egan'oh n'he'll'ol'wo'lo. Ahnedit oh'hat'oh'ha'ich'ch'ha'ithi. Eh thhip'ah'hot'ah'bo'hol'ni'ina'lo. Eh tan' ah'ach'kyat'ata'hol'loh. La'eh'ach'ena'k'ha'egol. Eh'ni ha'ik'ha'nsan'oh shin'sh'inde't eg'ado eh'da. N'de'na'na'eh. Be'sh'b'inde't del'be'ke'egi. Caterpillar Dozer'egi oh'hat'innis'ch'ole'na'ki'ch'ha'eh'ash. B'tha'eh chain'le'te't chain'egi oh'hat'innis'hi'li'ni'eh'oh. Yo'x'ol'oh shin'eh't eh'le'ekot'ah. Eh'shin' the early form of stage brush eradication. Sh'to'yo'holch'un eh tan'. Le'tcha'hot'ho, la'ha'ot'ho'n da'den'ha'egol'shot'at'at'ist'len'do. Do'ya'axhunra'da'halin'i tan'. Eh tan'sh'tshe'ya'ha'hot'zen'oh'ch'dez'ee to'lo'to'at'at'ah'holch'un'tle. L'lek'ana'lyeh'it'zat'ow'tzit'eh'do do'hasch'halinah'oh, hat'eshi han'eh'ya'ana'ghah'let's'zen'oh'eh tan'. Tan'sh't'ah'ron'ta'hol'ha'ho'nat'ahro'shteh'hot eh. Eh k'odi ri'ego n'ch'habit'be'be'be'ke'dino'ee. San'at'ani inhlshing'ed'di tribal consultation at every stage. Of decision making. Eh k'ho eh't ah'sa'te. Eh'shin' he'llishtan ad'el'oh, he'llinda'nnis'oz'oz'zo'oh k'ho'eh'do. B'nina'ye'go sl'al'ta'ta. Di'git. Di't ah'ny'ch'oh'hot'ah'ro'hot'ah. Ban'ta'ek'is'ta'hot'no'da. Cho'eh'de eh'ba'ye'go ban'an'ho'sh'kha. Ahro'di'kui'go'shin'ta'ro'le'eh'ha't'ot'sih'lim'da, di't'ah'ron'sh'ho'ed'ado'le'shik'el'hlshin'is'nan't'ani inhlshing'i. K'ha'ahron'zah'oh, n'sh'ho'sha'ta'hol'ah'egi ay'siba'eh'insun. Eh sheha.
Eh k'ho shila, eh sheha, Mr. Sage Koro. N'tep'na'hasan'la'egi. Uh, let me give the floor back over to Honorable Daniel So, ash eh'ya'hat'ah'sh'nan'atsi. Ahro'ti meeting in ke'da'gish'na.
Eh sheha la, uh. Uh, sanali. N'z'no'ba'eh'insi'to k'ha'egi, uh. Honorable Chair. Resource Development, ahro committee members, ahros'ke'ros'ke'z'be'ne'k'ha'egi, guy'no's'tan'egi'to. Ah eh sheha. Eh k'ho kodo'eh'ya'sato. Uh. Uh, nihe'ya. Uh, Brandon Valives. Uh, sato'ya'hat'oh'se. Cho'eh eh'shin'so. Ay see, um. Method of Research Chief sato'ya eh'ila. Ahro sato'ya ba'ach'eh'una'antes. Health Impact Assessment and. Uh, KBIS'shno. Ke'be'ina'sala. Eh'sto'uh sh'ta'uh ya'hat'oh'seshi'ak'undit. Uh, first off is. Mr. Brandon Valives.
Eh shila, sheha. Mr. Brandon Valives. You're up, sir.
Thank you. Um, good morning again, everybody. Um, I was going to go ahead and make comments regarding Ojo'ancino's chapter policy regarding the ten-mile buffer around Chaco. And then also discuss, um, UNDrip Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People, and in particular, FPIC. For free, prior, and informed consent. And just looking at the concept of consent, uh, since it is heavily related with the consultation process that had been brought up before. Um, just on a personal note for my personal background, um, on some of the area, I actually had spent a couple of years living and working inside Chaco Canyon. And then a few years later, uh, after graduating from University of New Mexico, uh, became a resident in Central Counselor. Um, I was really glad to hear some of the stories that were being brought forward by Delicat So and the chapter. Um, chapter manager Samuel Sage regarding some of the impacts that had occurred there. Uh, for me personally, some of the awakening on the oil and gas development that occurred within Counselor was, uh, back in twenty thirteen. Uh, left for a couple of weeks, returned, and then found a vertical oil and gas wellsite about twelve hundred foot from my main residence. I was shocked by that, and then that was my first exploration into the ideas of the Checkerboard. And Bureau of Land Management versus Tribal Trust versus Allotment Land versus State Land. And how difficult it is for local communities to be able to, um. Assert their sovereignty, if you will, um, over development decisions that are occurring directly in their backyard. Uh, didn't remember hearing anything about the oil and gas development that was going to take place, only a little over a thousand foot from my home. And, uh, it was a shock to see how quickly it seemed to appear from nowhere. Um, since then, I, in previous to then, I was, uh, brought in by Ojo'ancino Chapter as a community and economic development advisor. And part of my duties include, uh, engaging in those NEPA processes. Uh, that occur when the Bureau of Land Management wishes to conduct, uh, an oil and gas lease sale for federal minerals. Um, working on those processes has been interesting and frustrating, as was alluded to, uh, by some of the previous speakers. Uh, it, sometimes we voice issues that we know were going to be problems. Uh, if you will, negative impacts from development, as put forward by the Bureau of Land Management. Um, we make sure that, at least from a local, uh, perspective, chapter perspective, that we are. Trying to participate in the process in order to mitigate the negative impacts as much as possible from federal oil and gas development. Our interactions have been primarily on federal oil and gas development, not allotment, oil and gas development. And that is primarily because, um, in those situations, uh, there are not many. Um, if you will, positive impacts that come back. We don't end up getting monies coming back to the chapter, to the local government. Uh, it's not known, we don't believe that there's monies being generated for the Navajo Nation. Off of the federal oil and gas development that occurs within our area. Uh, as a result, that's also been the primary driver of oil and gas development within Counselor Chapter. Um, and then has increasingly been, uh, that development has then also moved to state lands. And then eventually to allotment lands that are within the, uh, chapter. The impacts, uh, have been immense, particularly on the infrastructure. Uh, there has been social impacts as well, involving crime, violent crime. Some of those actually made the newspaper, uh, in the past. I remember a lot of nights, depending on, uh, different policies that took place, uh, that, uh, gunfire, firefights. And we have no, and we have a severe lack of public services, such as fire and police. So as a result, when those occur, we do not have the public services infrastructure to call upon for public safety purposes. Um, unfortunately. Uh, these are all things that could be potentially addressed by some of the royalties that are generated from these federal and state, uh, oil and gas leasing, however. Uh, all those funds tend to go back to the state, the county, and the federal government, and I'll go into those a little bit more. Uh. In some of those other additional impacts have included flaring. I remember nights, I believe in twenty fourteen, I could go out, even though the flares were about a mile away, two miles away from the house. Uh, it lit up the sky to the point where you could read a newspaper. Uh, I remember the shadows it casted, uh, you know, on the walls behind us when we would look at the flares, and they did sound like jet engines. Fortunately, there has been some advancements made on flaring and reducing some of those impacts. But those impacts are real, and the air quality issues are real as well, too. Uh, EPA modeled higher formaldehyde levels that would exist in northern Counselor. And those were confirmed from some of those air quality studies that were discussed previously, where just the ambient level of formaldehyde. In northern Counselor. Is, um, substantially higher than what they should be, just naturally. Um, on top of that, the traffic issues. We have primarily only dirt roads within Counselor that residents use. Uh, just recently, within the last few weeks with rain and snow that occurred, the roads became impassable again. Uh, the only people that, uh, we saw driving in and out was oil and gas, uh, trucks at that point in time. And the roads themselves became impassable for most normal vehicles, uh, unless they were chained up or had some additional help and assistance. And those roads remained in poor shape for weeks and weeks and weeks afterwards. Uh, just because it's like molding clay. And once the clay dries, it's, uh, the, uh, the roads themselves, once that mud dries, it just becomes a very, very bumpy ride. And some of the expenses that are paid, uh, basically, the people of Counselor have subsidized the oil and gas development. Through increased costs to their vehicles. Quality of life decrease. Um. And also included in that is access to needed medical services, being able to get medications, being able to. Get out to access dialysis in places like Cuba or Farmington or elsewhere, or DZ, Siltma'ad'ile. Um. And then schooling as well, too. Uh, our schools in the area have a, uh, set number of mud days that they have to, uh, put in place because the roads just become impassable. So anyways, those are some personal reflections. Uh, but now I'll go ahead and, uh, it's okay, begin to discuss Ojo' chapter policy in regards to the ten-mile buffer. Um, it should be noted that the ten-mile buffer, and I believe this was noted before, that does not include any areas of Ojo'ancino Chapter. The chapter boundaries I'll be referring to come from the Eastern Navajo Land Commission. So none of our, uh, lands are within that ten-mile buffer, none of our boundaries exist within it. Uh, we believe that, uh, a section of southwest Counselor does, um, exist within the five-mile buffer. So just to give some context on this, at least from Ojo's chapter's perspective on this, our resolution. Uh, it's OJOE twelve dash seventeen dash nineteen, so it was December of twenty nineteen when this was passed slash zero zero six. Resolution for the Navajo Nation Council, United States House of Representatives and United States Senate regarding the Chaco Cultural Heritage Area Protection Act of twenty nineteen. I will go ahead and just read from this directly, so that way, uh, you can get an idea of more of the particulars of how Ojo was stanced on this. Uh, under, I'll start at whereas, uh, part three. Uh, some of the major issues requested that the federal government address in the previous version of the Chaco Bill. Was an allowance for disposal of lands to the Navajo Nation. Two, recognition of the larger Chacoan landscape beyond the act and the need for protection of these areas as well. Three, allow for the use of no surface occupancy as opposed to withdrawal of certain federal lands. Which may potentially impact the development of isolated allotment lands, specifically in the northern portions of the original proposed buffer. And that the NSO, no surface occupancy designations be to a minimum. Four, that the federal government should properly fund Chaco Cultural National Historical Park, Chaco. So that it can retain full-time park dedicated onsite cultural resource manager, natural resource manager. Law enforcement rangers and superintendent. Five, that the federal government should recognize the hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue being generated by federal leasing and royalties. Generated within the Eastern Agency of the Navajo Nation and allow return of these funds. To deal with the lack of public infrastructure and services faced by Eastern Agency residents. Six, Congress must recognize the complexities of the planning within Navajo Eastern Agency and provide special federal planning mechanisms. To enhance the ability of appropriate federal planning to be conducted, which is in sync with the needs of local Navajo communities. And begin to lessen federal land use conflicts with Eastern Agency communities. So back to whereas, number four, um, there were some changes that were made in the original Chaco Bill. So the chapter then states as, whereas four, the chapter is grateful that the current bill allows for the conveyance of land to Native American tribes. Although the chapter wishes to note that all the lands within the Chaco Cultural Heritage Area Protection Act of twenty nineteen. Are within the Navajo Nation Eastern Agency. And those federal lands are to be conveyed to the Navajo Nation. And whereas five, the chapter is generally in favor of the increased protections of Chaco. It, however, it recognizes that there are costs that may be potentially be borne by Navajo Alatis via decreased unitization potential with federal minerals. And due to lessened development of oil slash gas infrastructure for interspersed federal minerals. Which could affect desirability of certain allotments within the buffer areas. The chapter only recognizes that these potentials do exist, but not what degree that these potentials will affect Alatis. Essentially, uh, I believe that that was referring to, it would be nice to have an impact analysis to understand. Uh, what areas might be most affected, or what allotments might be most affected by any of that of the bill, as it was previously proposed. In order to mitigate those potential impacts. Uh, under now therefore be it resolved that the chapter per resolution. Two twelve nineteen zero zero six, therefore number four, is supportive of. The greatest amounts of federal land slash minerals not being developed or leased within the greater Chacoan landscape. And thus continues to support a ten-mile buffer zone, but under certain conditions. Two. These conditions include, one, the federal government allow no surface occupancy for certain federal minerals resources. In the northern portion of the buffer zone to be kept to a minimum in order to mitigate potential economic impacts upon Alatis. Two, the federal government impl- implement special land use planning mechanism which elevates and incorporates both Navajo Nation and Navajo Chapter land use planning. And authority within the Eastern Agency. Per Eastern Navajo Agency Council Resolution ENAC dash zero eight slash seventeen dash zero zero three. Titled Supporting the Development of an Navajo Eastern Agency Management Zone and supported by similar resolutions. From the ten Eastern Agency chapters within the current Farmington Field Office Resource Management Planning Area. And three, recognition that the federal government generates hundreds of millions of dollars in federal oil slash gas royalties. And lease sales while returning none of these monies directly back to the Navajo Nation Eastern Agency. Or directly affected Navajo chapters within which such development occurs. I'll just go into number four. Lastly, all parties should recognize that the Eastern Navajo Agency Council has called on the Bureau of Land Management. To have a temporary moratorium on new horizontal well development within Eastern Agency, though that, so that better planning can be conducted. And help to mitigate and avoid land use conflicts between Navajo communities and the BLM within the Checkerboard region of the Eastern Agency. Number five, this call for a temporary moratorium was also supported by the Navajo Nation President Russell B. Gay, sent on February sixth, twenty seventeen. To the BLM Farmington Field Office, which requested a moratorium. which requested a moratorium until a new Resource Management Plan Amendment was completed. Number six, currently many tens of thousands of federal minerals are being leased within the Eastern Agency. Some of these mineral underlie tribal trust lands split at state in no additional protection such as a BIA-5 no surface occupancy stipulation are being added to these tribal trust split estate lands. And seven, all parties concerned about Eastern Agency Navajo communities should listen to the myriad of resolutions passed by chapters and the Eastern Navajo Agency Council asking for better planning to ensure better development and true mitigation of negative impacts to residents of the Eastern Agency Checkerboard and for a fair revenue sharing mechanism to help address issues related to the lack of infrastructure and public services. Unfortunately, this bill does not appear in its current form to address these issues. Just to come back and to clarify, this was during the time when this was the second or third round of the Chaco Bill in Congress. Some of these issues could have been addressed by Congress at the time. Unfortunately, they were not addressed. Some were, some weren't, especially on revenue sharing and better planning, federal planning mechanisms to incorporate the Navajo Nation and Navajo chapters and communities. To give an idea of the scale of monies that had been, I guess if you will, total direct monetary benefit from oil and gas production within Counsellor. From 1998 to 2017, the federal government stood and gained about $22.6 million in that time. The state of New Mexico gained about $93.6 million during that time. And Sandoval County and Cuba schools gained approximately $6.6 million during that time. So that gives an idea for the scale of monies. This isn't production value. These are monies that were generated either through different processes such as leasing or from royalties. These are the estimated amounts that came through from a study. Meanwhile, Counsellor does not have improved roads, does not have paved roads, does not have local public safety services, things of that sort. But however, many entities surrounding Counsellor Chapter have gained substantial amounts of monies that these could have helped to fund in part. Additionally, there is an issue in Eastern, in the checkerboard, which is called tribal trust split estate lands. These are lands that are tribal trust surface. But underlying it is federal minerals. So the BLM manages the minerals under those lands. But the lands themselves are open for home site leasing and tribal development, Navajo Nation development and chapter development and other types of things from the Navajo Nation in its communities and chapters. Just recently, the Rio Cuervo Field Office, which is based in Albuquerque from the BLM, leased out multiple tribal trust split estate parcels within Oho and Sino Chapter. Many of these parcels are heavily populated. The chapter went ahead and engaged in the NEPA processes, indicating that we didn't think that this was a good idea. We also specifically asked that the BIA attach, and this comes from the Navo, this would be the Navajo Region BIA that would be in charge of this, I believe. I could be wrong on that, but we requested that the BIA attach a BIA 5 stipulation, which is no surface occupancy. So that way at least those lands would be kept intact at a minimum without having to worry about development on those lands. Unfortunately, the parcels were leased. I believe they're currently, the Oho and Sino has an Interior Board of Land Appeals, appeal on that particular on that particular lease sale. And also I believe it's in federal court right now as well, which you may hear about later as well too. So this type of situation though is in Counsellor, it's in other locations, and this comes back to that idea of consultation and trying to make sure that local residences have a a say in what's occurring. Related to this, Oho and Sino Chapter is also supportive of the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples and in particular of free prior and informed consent. So Oho did pass a resolution supporting the Navajo Nation Council Standing Committee Resolutions of 0165-17 and 0167-17 and recommending that the Navajo Nation Council also incorporate United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples and the International Standard of Free Prior and Inform Consent into Navajo Nation laws. This resolution is numbered OJOE 06-19-17/001. And I'll just read whereas eight and nine from this, which is, and we did not draft this, but we did agree with this language completely within the resolution, but as a chapter, however, part eight says, while all along the Dene owned lands in territories that they traditionally occupied in the midst of the Four Sacred Mountains, these lands were taken from them without their free prior and informed consent. Many of these lands have sacred places and sites that are important to the Dene. Yet, without regards to the sanctity of these lands to the Dene, the transnational corporations and the United States government unilaterally took these lands under the concept of the right of discovery and terra nullius. And part nine, the international human rights standard of free prior and informed consent is not foreign to the Dene. It is translated as you must meet with the person you wish to take something from without any trickery, without any deception, well in advance of the final decision. Seek their input and approval to arrive at a final decision. Elements such as talking things out, N'abekyati, and interspersed with kinship, respect and dignity are the fundamental principles respected by the Dene. So in light of that, we, the chapter recognizes that although the chapter is supportive of the 10 mile buffer, it also recognizes that chapters that are within that 10 mile buffer, many of which have large number, large amounts of lands, had passed resolutions requesting a five mile buffer. Last time we, the looking at NABIGJA-05-20 from the Navajo, from the N'abekyati Standing Committee indicated that Werfino Chapter, Lake Valley Chapter, N'igizi Chapter, Pueblo Pantado and White Rock Chapters had passed resolutions requesting a five mile buffer. In addition, the Eastern Navajo Agency Council also passed a similar resolution. And then of course, the Navajo, the N'abekyati Standing Committee resolution that I had just referenced as well too. In that sense, coming back to FPIC. FPIC is, and this is reading from the Free Prior and Informed Consent Manual from the United Nations. FPIC is, this is reading from that directly, FPIC is required prior to the approval and or commencement of any project that may affect the lands, territories and resources that indigenous peoples customarily own, occupy or otherwise use in view of their collective rights to self-determination and to their lands, territories, natural resources and related properties. And then finally, just looking at consent itself. It is defined as consent refers to the collective decision made by the rights holders and reached through customary decision-making processes of the affected indigenous peoples or communities. Consent must be sought and granted or withheld according to the unique formal or informal political administrative dynamic of each community. Indigenous peoples and local communities must be able to participate through their own freely chosen representatives while ensuring the participation of youth, women and elderly and persons with disabilities as much as possible. In particular, consent is a freely given decision that may be a yes, no, or a yes with conditions, including the option to reconsider if the proposed activities change or if new information relevant to the proposed activities emerges. A collective decision through consensus or majority is determined by affected peoples in accordance with their own customs and traditions. The expression of rights to self-determination, lands, resources and territories, culture and giving or withheld in phases over specific periods of time for distinct stages or phases of the project activities. It is not a one-off process. The reason that, oh, the reason, part of the reason Oho is supportive of this concept being instituted by the federal government is because had FPIC been asked for or engaged during these leasing processes, we probably could have mitigated many of the impacts, negative impacts that occurred. So while Oho and Sino is supportive of the 10 mile buffer, it does believe that FPIC should be engaged and that some of these, these decisions and consent should be also understood and incorporated into final decision-making processes. So anyways, just wanted to go over that from the policy perspective of the chapter itself.
Thank you, Mr. Velvis. Appreciate that. If you would, please send us all your supporting documents that you just referenced today. Appreciate that. Honorable Daniel So, do you have any other persons that would like to present?
Thank you, Hela. Mr. Velivis. We certainly appreciate the depth of information that you've presented. Ados Shonai to Resource and Development Committee. Ados Shikido Shutez and Kweigi Daino Faige. Kodo Eya Shite. He's now the Vice President of Torreon Star Lake Chapter. And again, through personal experience and through his work, he will present a different facet of what we're presenting as what the nation, the nation's council and the folks that aspects that we hold from the area that, the northern area that I represent. Okay, listen. So to look to with that, Mr. Mario Tencio.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mario Tencio, you have the floor.
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Rickenes, honorable members of the Resource and Development Committee. I say hey, Dan, for giving us this time. Quickly, I'm gonna, I'm here as a spokesperson for my mother and father. I have, I have permission to speak on their behalf. My mother and father have 20, at least 20 alamis they have interests in extending from Counsellor's all the way to Oho and Sino and to Torreon. Within this, within their lands, we are, we are very, we ask you to consider the withdrawal and how, how in the language it says the greater connected landscape for planning purposes. Want to go back and go to February of 2019. Due to operator error on my dad's land, enduring well 315H, something broke and 50,000 gallons of oil and toxic waste spilled into the Escobado Wash. And, and looking at the reports, knowing we had to go find the reports ourselves, the underlying aquifer, the surface water has been contaminated. All of my dad's lands that he has are all within the watershed of the Escobado Wash. The Escobado Wash flows into the northwest section of the Chaco Historic National Park and it flows through multiple wildlife areas. They call it Deinad Zen Wilderness Area. Ashi and Slapa Wilderness Area and the more that were, that were created recently. Very important that we come to that. The, that spill has is in violation of the Navajo Nation Safe Drinking Water Act. The Navajo Nation Safe Drinking Water Act is, is in effect over the Eastern Navajo Agency regardless of land status. In there, when the Eastern Navajo Nation Safe Drinking Water Act is an aquifer protection plan that cites the protection of sacred springs and all the water uses in the, in the region. And in Dave Brugge's, say, Ethno History of the Chaco Region, which is the Navajo Nation Ethno History of the Navajos and the, and the history in the Chaco Region. There's a map in there and they cite, and there's two wells that are identified, two springs, sacred springs that are within the Escobado Wash. Those have been, are going to be contaminated, Chinanti. Very important. Don't wish this on no one else's lands, on anyone's. This is a hard thing to say because our, our late great elder that just passed away, can't say his name. He's one that says they're going to ruin the water. We have to get these companies out. It's what happened. It's happened what our elder told us. And so that's, that's have to report to you. That's what's happened. My mother and father have sued the Bureau of Land Management for violation of the National Environmental Protection Act and violation of the National Historic Preservation Act. They have, they are, they are putting their case in the, currently some of them are in the 10th Circuit Court in Denver. That's as far as my parents have, have gone to, to stop the unchecked oil drilling. Very important, they're not just thinking about money right now. They're talking about way into the future. Thinking about the kids that are coming. When, when the oldest, the youngest one of us right now, the baby girl that's already born today, when she's the oldest one of our tribe, we're probably thinking about when another, another seven, seven generations from her. A, that's how we're, we're focused on this. I said this to the Eastern Navajo Agency Council. And all through the abstentions and the no votes that happened, the resolution they, they passed, it didn't pass because it did not reach the, a simple plurality, a simple majority of all votes cast. And so Eastern Navajo Agency is not unified in the five mile buffer zone, Chinanti. And so that, those abstention votes and the no votes outweigh the yes votes that happened at the Eastern Navajo Agency Council. And so in the balance, really in the considering of this, really need to weigh that in itself. When you, when you go before, when you headed to Washington DC, is that, on all of this, it's not just the money, it's the public health. The Safe Drinking Water Act is written from a public health perspective. Nihiiki ai yusaihin sen. Herman Daniel. Chinanti for your prayer. This is our advocacy is based on that very principle. We're trying to save it. Right now, Rio Cuervo Field Office from Albuquerque is approving wells on lands that are identified by the Oho and Sino Chapter as part of the 100-year water plan. Those are being put on, on the, on the auction block. And those, those aquifer, the aquifer up there feeds all the way to White Horse Lake Chapter, Pueblo Pantado Chapter, Not Neel Jean and Oho and Sino, all those that aquifer has kept the people alive for a long time. Now that's going to be in danger. It already, the oil and gas have already contaminated the aquifer in Counsellor on my dad's lands. We don't want it to happen in Oho and Sino. Chinanti, you have a power and authority to start looking into this. Shimadoshijaki, they, they, they say, whatever you say, we want to keep the people safe. Oh, and so quickly, everyone has said a lot. Main thing is that in this, in this Chaco withdrawal, they talk about changing and making a whole new resource management plan. they talk about changing and making a whole new resource management plan. Eh, eh, I guess, I guess, eh, been in the knee, uh, he cases it. We're behind the Chaco withdrawal, so they can start planning for this. So they can tell us where they're gonna damage the water. So we can get ready and, and be sure that all the truth is held out in front of the people. And if people want it, then they need to get all the money that's coming from oil and gas. Shinanti, Akudo, I said, I said, hey, Danzin, Chairman Riquinez. I do, and I just wanna keep my comments brief. But uh, do thank you for this time. Ados Shichi, thank Mr. uh, Senor Daniel So, uh, give it back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Tensio. Yo, Hataila, there was four people listed on the agenda here, Honorable Daniel So, uh, Hataya.
Before I, uh, we hand it all back, I'd like to make some closing comments. On me? Uh, yes, go ahead, uh, Chairman So. Okay. We've talked about landscape protection, air quality, water uh, uh, quality. And, and the main thing, I guess, is aspect. The, in the Rio Perco Field Office, um, management plan. We had met early on with a different field manager. I think his last name was either Aragon. Anyway, at that time, we told him, and you have to understand way back in nineteen seventy. And our chapter leadership had been advocating for healthcare services and water. And in about nineteen sixty-seven, uh, Congress appropriated some money. And five wells were drilled north and east of Oho Encino. Those five wells originally supplied a hundred and fifty homes. And I think we're now, the, the extensions since then, you know, probably goes into two hundred and fifty homes. Those felt five wells are into an aquifer that exists from west of Chaco all the way to east of Chaco, I mean, uh, east of Oho Encino. Right now, those wells, water that is produced, and it's now the management has been turned to NTU A. Those wells are so pure that there is no treatment plants. Water is so soft that when you put wash with soap, you have to wash two or three different times to rinse that soap off. That's how pristine the water is. And so, uh, in reviewing what was approved, those considerations were not even part of the environmental assessment, needless to say, the environmental impact assessment. And it was signed off again without input from the community people. So in, in that aspect, the power and authority of, as Yamaeza Amber Kinesbokrati refers, the mother government does not consider community residents' voices. The government-to-government relationship that this federal tribal consultation process, the government-to-government is with the heads of each government, but in, in, in our case, the three branch government. The opening line of our uh, laws. Navajo Nation Council is the governing body. And as such, the committees of the council never heard about these. And it's only been, uh, the aspect of, of uh, voices of the grandmas that prompted this standing up for the commu-, community. So in, in that aspect, uh, the water, the air, the land, or in other words, in our terms, Niemanahassan. Ado, Dahevi, Dahevi, Yonahassan, Aniki, and the sacred. And the Navajo Nation is using the laws of the federal government, meaning, uh, the sacredness. It doesn't, the Navajo laws doesn't con- uh, consider or talk about. Aho, Tenasjaje. Aho, eh, ya. And da, such answer is a, they, ah, hey, gee, ado, kweiki. Aho, eh, ya. And forgive me only people to have to mention this. Neetzinskoliyeke. Eh, kweiki, laho, na, so. Ko kweiki are Navajo Historic Preservation. So, I see, eh, nskida. Ah, Ike, shink, is not a, uh. There's family ill offering places. And there are other places that the folks don't want people to know. Eh, degi to bahaneta. Eh, nshin, chidet, it, sudan, eh. Ado, kon, saho, eh, ya. Azay, sudan, eh. Azay, nde, gi, degi, eh, kweiki. Neet, ah, ah, just, shenan, honestly, chuk, uh, nikka. And so they have to travel farther and explore more to find the ceremonial herbs. And those medicinal herbs. Ko, kweiki, sato. Azot, o, leh, eh. Okhot, o, o, eh, ado, eh, 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 kweiki, uh, Shinanti. Uh. Uh, kweiki, nakhada, ho, eh, ki, to, kweiki, eh, ya. Uh, neet, eh, hasit, eh, ki. Um, eh, eh, ya, sato, behad, the sit, eh, to, at least. Um. And, and, and it's right now with that executive order. They're open. They're opening the doors. What shall the planning process be? What shall the tribal consultation be? Oko, kude, an, hek, kude, and hek, was, under. But ilay, be, nas, the, be, nintla, what are we gonna put forward? Okhot, otto. Otto, BLM, by any clue, Ado BIE, by any clue, an, hege, shang. As you can see, there is quite a bit of knowledge and expertise that our folks brought forth. And we wish to, um, put that forward in, in this health impact assessment. Uh, that be enough, a lahi, that study um, puts forth, and I, I would defer that presentation because it can take anywhere, question and answer up to, and even inclusive of uh, three to four hours. For, uh, but at the same time, we would uh, ask the Resource and Development Committee, after you, um, discussed this among yourselves, yes. Eh, you seen, uh, uh, this piece, an, a leg, eh, the, now, the, eh, kit, resolution. And in this other aspect, the other areas are being overrun. Alaito, eh, ah, jixto, kaka, di, cha. Sanoson, she, stok, sato, she, eh, behad, of, cito, sato, she, eh, ya. Oh. Uh, going forward, there's uh, tribal consultation that are scheduled. I think it was somewhere around, uh, February twenty-third. And it's only like, like two hours in each segment at San Juan College. Oko, arashi, eh, na, de, kado, leh, and arashi, eh, bah, na, ne, zeh, to, leh. And again, the area that I represent, our main position is consider the cumulative impacts. One well, in their view, it doesn't talk about, or those emissions, or that truck traffic. It's about kweiki, it's like in a glass bubble, go, they, yeah. In their review. Ado, not even two hundred feet away, there's another well pad. And that one is like in, in another glass bubble. But the total impact, eh, eh, to to, tonan, eh, da. And in the environmental impact assessment, the environmental assessment, see, eh. Eh, do, I see. Oh, that's not the, that's not part of our review. It's, it's, don't get, nee, eh. Um. Mr. Chairman, um, I have to go inside and recharge my battery, but uh, that would be, uh, battery to my cellphone. That would be our presentation. We stand for questions.
Okay. And now, Honorable Chairman Daniel So. Ro, nshil, dah, ha, sor, shna, ar, eh. Agenda, gee, ko, be, ke, ko, go, is, ke, das, zoh, gee. Eh, ya, ha, bi, gune. Alatis, baka, ado, si, gune, eh, eh, ya, ha, Mr. Richard, be, ge, shini, hich, eh, had, zeh, to, leh, to. At, eh, deh, Shinanti, ah, shen, eh, gee, Honorable Members, Vardisi, do you have any questions or comments before I hand it over to the Alatis?
Chairman.
Yes, Honorable Freeland.
Thank you, Chairman. Ados, uh, thank you. Ado, um, Shichi. Honorable So and your, your agents this morning, thank you for that presentation and information you shared as well, so. Uh, just wanted to, to say that and, and of course, say good morning to you and everyone on this call. Um, Chairman, just a comment. Um, eh, eh, yeah, and I'm ready to hear from the Alatis now. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Akko, Sheila, we'll move to see on the agenda. There was a request made during the introductions this morning that Mr. Andrew Charlie would like to speak first. Akko, eh, she, sabah, hadol, jish, koro, uh, Mr. Andrew Charlie. Mr. Charlie. On twice.
And, dash, eh, da, and, dash, oh, di, ta. Uh, uh, oh, yeah, te, sh, tala, to. Uh, to, ke, uh, to, RDC, je, uh, lunch. Ta, vada, nan, tah, ki, uh, to, net, aw, lka, eh, ki, to. Bala, what, uh, committee, zan, lan, ki, to, ke, uh, to, shita, eh. Uh, Marfui, base, wa, sa, an. Ado, and, that, uh, eh, nda, so, chne, eh, gish, Nan, eh, it, den, mukta, eh. Nah, han, eh, da, ta, ta, sedit, san, to, ado, and, that, uh, land board, uh, to, kui, shink, to, uh, eh, da, so, chne, penda. Eh, do, ke, uh, do, do, she, na, ta, ni. Tan, oh, chne, eh, to, base, wa, sa, an, to, ne, ban, tah, kha, eh, ki, to. Ko, kund, eh, eh, hol, jish, koe, eh, eh, tan, oh, chne, eh, to. Ado, and, that, kudon, hin, Nan, eh, zan, lan, ki, eh, ya, tan, ki, de, de, zeh, eh, zu, tan, ki, chne. Akko, eh, ba, he, eh, nah. Ado, shita, eh, to, hat, zeh, san, kudon, eh, na, ki, zu, to, chapter president, lan, ki. Urban, chav, shi, eh, do, ke, eh, ni, tra. Ni, tra, oh, sado, uh, do, uh, do. Den, never, ke, eh, shi, ten, eh, gi, na, yez, eh, to, counselor. Oho Encino, Torion, Pebble, Ventado, Chaco Canyon, Wofener Chapter, nah, Lake Valley. She, eh, 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 and Andrew Charlie, dash, chne, eh, to, Andy Charlie, eh. Uh, what, eh, 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 shi, da, son. Akund, eh, Andy Charlie, eh, eh, si. Eh, an, le, na, lka, de, da, eh, eh, what, eh, be, 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 she, eh, at, eh, the, eh, ya, eh. Akko, uh, don, shlen, eh, na, huh, ma, shli, eh, to. Uh, na, 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 st, eh, eh, na, ta, eh, na, eh, to, eh, in, let, dash, eh, ni, eh, pas, shen. Uh, do, and, that, uh, tsal, na, pich, eh, dash, eh, chay. Na, koi, de, na, eh, ya, dash, eh, nal. Akko, eh, eh, ya, da, ke, eh, shi, ya, eh, 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 chen, be, hil, eh, hol, eh. Chaco Canyon, da, da, da. Uh, to, eh, 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 to, na, huh, kons, eh, eh, be, chun, ke, eh, hol, eh. Uh, do, and, that, uh, di, ke, eh, na, eh, ke, eh, na, zan, eh, di, di, and, that, la, med, ol, eh, eh. Uh, do, eh, dash, eh, nal, eh, ach, eh, na, chi, ach, eh, ha, eh. Ah, she, eh, ni, be, je, eh, nde, she, eh, eh, ni, ah, shi, nha, shi, nha, shi, she, eh, nha, eh. To, eh, 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 shma, san, eh, eh, oh, li, eh, nde, eh, san, to, il, ka, shol, eh, eh. To, eh, she, be, be, tsal, eh, eh. Eh, oh, li, eh, de, has, eh, eh, so. Eh, she, be, ni, na, eh, so, bha, 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 shi, to, be, je. Akko, ke, eh, shi, ke, eh, da, lan, ki, kul, no, eh, di. Akko, eh, nde, eh, eh, na, so, na, zan, eh, she, eh, eh, oh. To, eh, eh, to, ro, bha, chro, eh, da, eh, eh. Akko, eh, ke, eh, chua, slen, da, slin. Akko, eh, ke, eh, be, chay, che, dan, lan, eh, be, ken, da, eh, 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 eh. Be, ka, ke, huit, eh, uh, di, bi, eh, be, chen, da, eh, il, eh, da, eh. Oh, yo, do, eh, ke, eh, di, eh, ah, eh, eh, she, be, chen, da, eh, il, eh, shi, eh, shen, eh, Leo, Washman, da, eh, or Lester, so, eh, da, eh. Akund, eh, every year, eh, na, da, il, eh. Akko, na, ki, di, eh, ke, na, da, il, eh, la, eh, bi, eh, eh, be, so, eh, eh. Akko, di, eh, ke, eh, eh, ka, san, eh, na, lan, eh, ki, zu, du, eh, you, eh. Bah, han, eh, to, koon, eh, eh, hin, Nan, eh, da, eh, dan, lan, eh, in, da, eh, san, eh. Shinali, na, eh, san, eh. Ka, shen, tsuk, eh, to, zu, du, eh, eh, hat, zeh, kudo, pain, san, eh, it, zu, du, eh, eh, hat, zeh, eh, do. Eh, 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 eh. Akko, di, eh, kate, lan, eh, ki, de, lan, eh, ki, eh, shoy, eh, be, ken, da, eh, eh, eh. Ni, mah, na, san.
Tida tesanar kha, naashtal kha. Ha tida be, be benashitot, chilbe niye go. Aa niye ya, shoba khuznudhoshin da niyutte. Akol tite, chukadhe zuzumkhine biyoon na esen nel tite. Khaseht, khasehte beso betoh no ebi inosre. Ako e ni chukonaliya ebi ketah ita rokho. Be keda shincha ndasohkai. Dona halchandashin ketah iya. Haljyon chil kha, ohhotte shekeinol. Ako tite, Chaco Canyon Bumpurzonha. Na ni ishsozunidu eto to, doshitlakute eda. Beni na doshitlakute eti indanat la mediki et sabikasata. That's belongs to individual. Ee epeteti, chokpadi lidopeteteda. Aa do, Jonathan nezodo peteteda. Etilel, lel sinnelgi hotte. Na na khuchukubasana, ho tlonegi itsechnosti zusana, ho tlonegi. It's a different story. Ee aju keya basa, ho lonegi et a't at a't neil a'mt ee epeteti. Ako e't netail a'mt e'ye laosniyot ee yata tolko. Ee aju go e hotte. Khutohju go e keda lis talia. Khut anah lo ba honi zishkainol. Aa ni leide. Ta'to berv zuzumdan taha ta'e, ti kavaya ta'chigi ol. Khutahot e ro tanlchiondodita, na ni ita hotte ende. Aa do etanaz, ta'do ushte etu da ta't elxhoro childa manda tolni lti ni. Ek adishin e hotte e ba'ha'nyan. Eelkeha no. BLM, Inspector Adiyaholnya, State Department. Na na aro xaro she'thuisadontota, etina bohoneshin. Got involved that. Ako inhalchanan darne shigilto adnay kitalkai. Aa de gholto hanne ho loshin hotte. Ako tite, aa ni tichid sondeel barhanne ni. Eelha tina n'te da noson. Akhodod akhodondha, kha edona dati da. Le re yada inti gi na n'te. Chukadhutte hatishi na chni. Kui nerabo ka, kotelha no bahanne. Akon de kote yo hotte. Aa de na chudilha kenno. Ta'do ha'ta da e ba'ha'itita. Ago kuet aa ni ni eti bayilchigi. Et'i Washington, the National Park Service, et'a kaita epintusti. Le ato olne ta'ta akho te nekei dahatiin te. Ta bagant te, ta akho na stior. Asal eta harne. Chilchinha ken'te la epabulobani tu ye'achukona. Shuma asanendee komochi ya chilchinhanan shkhasino. Pa'ari hakohortala. Ishchego etato, adokana ostenda chonne ni kholno. Et'i inne ni e ye'atene be dahnoson. JCPK urye, na't aa ni na't lichnagich. Ka pijibena sthahda, e besda ku e harne tite. Akho kei dahuiti inde, akon nahastohla pisunnel ti. Inside the boundary of the parks. Kuet ato hadat ni ta'ta tite the national epeteti iki. Doa kapinshin siltu. I was a representative national park. Do needed that body staritita. The plan gi do chon iraski. Chinese tahle oversee them. They already contract hatishi. Chilchanda eti a't elxkushte diila. Ee beni na ek asaholno sechnosti. Ha de ushinle thuyin na nda ondahuisni. Kuebe tcha ebulitona te chonano. Tite o e kha'gi e ni te shekeinol. Tish shekshepinasi yashthi gi e. Chaco Canyon do, akilaya hati inde North entrance. So ta aro lefai malja ade. Shuma asanendee shgregramande epanastoson, a e keya so ani bayashthi. Aa do e re shinala den, uh den, uh Daniel Sew. Shinala yen, na ni gi e blaghatenelne. Ee yehi hatiza. So their family is not longer to petetita kha. Hanaliye etaka kha. Ha ni de datistlen be wachiu ta'ta be wachin de. Hashthin soha but datistlen hotte wachu. She aro shnadi, do eti shechis, ha ye etaka ishjorlto. Khutao eti she, a't di information she. So chalibas bazan illesher sozi. Jo e eti de, na'lsosha da da doshiha no. Conservation plan, is all that information is in the history. Akutao te shekeinol, na ni aro in the dati kakho. Nklaznada, nahlhotijin te kue diha no nehtadirna. Akie'ala shuvthabitzen da tuzlos. Ha e yana nahlte kue khotte da bitzen no, attena nha na. Ya da shuf. Chon klazni nihui ya e, bitzen klazni nihli epijelte di. Be lahsa ane e kon Washingtono deskagi, beso betasa. Ee hotte epijelva dishli, aro e kon tokka. Ee a de da yoda eti daten tokka. Ako e bebe tcha honi ye'oh e bechiren tosalo ya de endoka. This is how it works. Ako tibitsen ni, nklazni neli epito, chigi inidetorello. Do ira akho da. Ha de shinle zuda iti skade nklaznahandas. She eti aju hotte, shna she eti aju ha'nto hotte eda. So da ha de shinhani neli eti shid. Pijeto hajonanllo, bit, bit e't zikat. Kache'el tonhosba. Kha'ta do lechshinandaa nochni. Ako tii kakho te inidet beha'ta. Government body enhin hasla chutohna. Aa ni hotte. The government body is belongs to the voters. Reserut epinde. Government body supposed to be up there. Karero ni re tada tis bar. Or distant CGC be keda nochni, not only tada tiskar. Pijekonakatini shitetee epajinipte. Ee be tado e we got a high blood pressure. We got a headache, we got sickness. Ba'nekin ni kholno. Hatishi te ne hotte. They're sick because of this. Khut enah lo eshe beketishinandaa nochni. Ako tite, do liu et eda. Aa ni ifai malja hotte no ehit eda. Ako she inseneto petetita tite. National Park, BLM. BLM e kuebe lenha no. Who's take care of that? We always live there. We're the people that be protected. We never damage our mother nature. Oh, tite odon needed that e. Oligi halit otobanti tite. Alkitada askotle'ta hotte, we shet e hataza. Ako lis talia. Khesh e yana ta, neil kha tite. Atten. Ako tichaco canyonha, na ni gi chukadnochni. Aa siye go e khasnananshishlaskeinol, shenan tai. Di le blanko chreidnepost, onle seven's legend. Fifty-seven eighteen, State Highway. Kha'te da, that is kar, kha'te didn't kar da noson. I was the one that I closed the North entrance. Kuna osahte wait ayahhotte o'sla. I was the one that I put a new, uh, telecard there. Aro chi inu ba'hashianda. A government operator. I sa'shikode kalin, danwan kalin do tanind. Aro national park don't want to damage those mother nature. Akon de na, na shikshinalo onda. I, uh, uh, used to play the root in the travel ranch. West kuya, uh, kudo ishko chetinigi. Akwer travel ranch toson. Ero nepeteti. Aro no shibrato. Ee evranata chi ni gi e kalin, berusi a'halyan, ten. Oh hotte o'wut. Ee aro, before you passed the Escobar. Aro do ari'te tourism. Muffler, tailpipe, de yo te ni kha no bahanne. Ti bahshnegi esheta'ebal bazan. Ni nan tai tanlenigi. Khola sheta'ra da balbazan ti peswa'ha, ananleni peslaosni tite. Tite ohhotte eda sheta'hi. O wachro ta'le, chukad oh, kanfids. Qua mayo, ten, unasilchitli. Akon de the way is plan giya. Ishtanmo bi ten. A't at a'mle dirty malgo da tihol aro le. Akho, otot da chite yate. Otway shabantseske shenan tai nochni. Ti blaxha'na hanne lole la ade. Otzobigida ona, adat ini shenan tai. Canyon di shechichi hita edo basa ho londa. Na ho national mind me she'ta da basa ho londa. Aro in de da, kuchin pet, uh, petroquay force to. Akon lego e yata'iztkein. Wapaki, Sunset Crater, Walnut Canyon. Ee a't tite, ba'ho'nsunshi. Do ba'ho'inni tite, ishret a e. Khut onniko da ni da, ha kam shaco canyonzai ten. Akhotanah lo banseske esko. Ako tii katana ideshnalgi kat isch. Do da ilha shahno bahanne. Di la bansi kai. Ee a'chisna khobe keda ita, it abetschoi te e be na'halta. Hotte shekeinol. So da, do chet da de do nishan son. Tite za'to'ran kideino tahi. Edo hajoba ho noson. Democratic, Republican. Ti shenchi tennel. A'ta chenizi chet nineteen eighty-nine etanwunderata. Ee beni na eti bitsitin kha, na ni hati. Et ato buil a'ta di shenrata chet. Oti o chet borlneha no kat o'ta de kai. Ayi sipuchupana i nhe e'ten. Jonathan nezobke sata'gi, et nebe nan tai tite. Tishchet, ohjor nebe chiondolni lti ni do, be bazha. Peswa'ha sa ane to zda'altchubata isnel. Eto okutin ni do do hotte edo. So da, tinochnu e inha'ta yetnel. World people that we vote for you. To, ni ka'to chet beni ya, ni cha'to chet beni ya. Ago kue eschaliya de bl, blna kenlenha landite. Uh, Lester Sozi. Koden wunder, wundera de ha'ti. Do na na koden na'ago. Ha leta e ido lilo e. Ni nan tai t etu hotte edo. Akon de le bitta'ta'ta'skainol. Ti tita ha'ta'tse. Na'lar kha, na ni gi do, na'san ba'ha'nyan. Ta'itaa de chwin us, by the coffee sea. They have a camp. Ee gi gi, they telling us how to get our own leader. The plan. Ekenama'ta, na ni gi et a'ta bo'tol us. Ko de da keta'le. Ni chet nohete ilhanitlchatana. Be ha'ikai, be noil glad. Ee aro offer forlonle thoh, thoh ba'hyah. Ako tibane kai. Tishchit aro nde, rubdauil a'ta. Ni inhalchene ya de ta'ido chakon peso bandetot a'kho. Az eichindan linod keya nha'iketa tez ido hatit a'noi a'y. Kheshi itza bansi kai, ishe'ha'ju otte. Ha'ti she na chenhan do'ta'alkute. Holunha shobara, soyer de shenshitda, shenan tai nochni. Ti khotsohote zidib kahonseske eso de shun. Do ira bo'lo de shunida. Ti she cheyede ade ha'ti ko behasan tite. Daniel Seitch. Bahashthuil, leni bepeswa'ha sa ananlen de. O ichthada, eshna'ha shewet a. Talbentara to. A'do't ego neyan hazan zato ichthadand. Ne ka'alu't, ne shte'hashte'isnello. Khut a e, e ishe'we'ta hasan. Khut a et shekeinol. Ago kat tishchid neyin da'tiket. Hashit a na'ta ni lincharle tjeridu olgen de ha no nasidiket. Ha kam e thoththoy, thodne'ya yahitsi. Aro nechukke'asuglabi hadal, adanoda. Nchionedoda ni da. Ako tite, ako tii o'vulchinchil nesho. Halchin ye'da ni halchin. Khatsa da tsobenjegaido halchin. A government operator chunno tite a't eti solakka, shidu halchin obenanish olge. Ta'ta ba'ho'nsunharlen, ohshkeinol. Akho, so da ta'shonda, shenan tai. Otzobigida. So da hajonha'ta tochze Washington. Bekeinolchil, ako tite. Luhan olge'iro tite obenantlo olge luhan. Ke'sa ni lchotohne'e. A'ta, ee apesoha di nili. Ee ka Secretary Interior, ta'itaa'to di lawyer isnel, be tenne'isnel. Akama, Pablo. Ten, uh, Senna Ena Pablo. Ayu a'do't et ayu yin delikshi ha no bahanne zooni da. Akon de, hashit a e ya, akushte onniklson te'ltu. Ni chi chadru'il, khut a'chat, ash e osige tida, na'shtez. A'do onihja, a't chadlu, e khotet nebetkate. U'thashi ezgeho. Ako e kue entaba nalta, e neshte'ishinati stan. Aro e beye'chigi tite, chuta chunoba da ochelna. Ako tii hashina laha'neto hyu. Ako tii, para'shki, achonha'na ha'znishke. Be nahagaidanlenne. Abijanana ha'ta'ti kat. Akho brlekana'at fonnha'ta epin. Be hatatani ten, atsana yofsa, yo, tzutlka'nyan. Kar'e'ta be, bechohorsish, ve'kashi chle bechohorsish. Ee a'chisna, so da shhamel, la de etkhohidi na. Alanle de, a, a de etkhohi no la kahorjish. Kholo'nua ha'no'da. Eighteen sixty-eight, na'lsosanha no'da. Hatishi beni gi e yakoota'ker. Ni chilnleti ne'ltu. Hatishi nge'esa lahtso'yo adit hati yani keinleni. Ba'chini ba'ti no. Khutod a'do hazan tu, o la itlchubad e kai. Lahtso'yo kholno shi. A'don de ze'ha'zadi gajubeyachiketu. A'don de tekbe'nanishto'tlchil. Do va'hyo'snatu. Kha'ta e'te nekeshi ha'tu tzushitna nasidiketu. Ako e vchena a'to hotte. Aa ni, aa ni tene lanne'tu. University yo'ta'gi, BYU de. Tite egit shekeinol. Akho, shitene lenigit apibeborlne'ti. Ol'en kes, do tananish da ni do tanne'tu, lananish lota ni. Chokon de kue, bumpurzonro kiri she edo'ta tishin. Ti kuchina astosonnel gi et adhotte osonnel. Ti de ta'le khothot a'to'lini gi edo hotte eda. Hashit a e yane'ishin, be'ne'te, e brlekana be, bebe tjeridu inil. Jo e a'chisna. Ee beni na do ni chashthi da. Ako hotte. Ee beni na do'tschnel len borda'tanlo'da. Ni chi eti na'stoba di tzedo be nha'azan da'ni. Ta'do'to'hanene betschna. Ti she'ni ishlegi ti inenel la medigi. Do chon itan de kueseki e'ha'nsogoshibitkata. Ha do be'esa'tla, lenz onrigi bechikin te. Hotte. Ako keya ta'ta hastonya. Da, kheshi tepita'te ten, tope'ho'zan. Ee presonan ten goes to the Wunderup. It doesn't go to the, uh, eastern. Akon itchikin te. Ee be'ne'iganha'ta na ahotzobigirikehot ni. Konit a'te, ni chi yana ta'ho'te, edo khotu'to'ta nili. Beni na eti ni peswa'ha sa anadu'ta'tha'dakitata. Ha shobara chet o adit, o nhinzishtha'le. Ni chishe'ta shota'sha'ne chishe'ta, khotu le'tanllo. Ago khotu hashina la, na'ha'chin. Kodo resolution taiti. Anah zukho. Char'da ha'san so'ta tadeskar. Kha'ta e, khorana hotte'tlchil. Ako tite nepetetee e ba'ho'inni. Do liu et eda chon somodshin. Ta'ta tiskali be'na'wa'shinto'nu, aro na'ste'da no do'lu'chey da do'le'to hotte. Chhotenah lo banseske shekeinol. Doshi, ba'ha'ne'ide de shekernoson, she ban'da'ide do'chiketo. Aro in de ta'sha'hen'tla aset'saliya zike. Aro in de ta, with, with members nleni gi do. Aro sheta'hi, peswa'ha sa an kue ni tchukon leni do ke. Aro in de le Arizona, aletla, land board. Aro kodo she'we'do ufner'tshter do. Da'ostanla kude'adet toryon de sheta'hi, elsendawal. Ake he, naha'hen'sun. Aro tasohchi, ye'we'na ha'ya'ta'shhi. Khut a e banseske'se git a'tikpat. So da shibohna zonit a'ta hasdi. Ako tite, khototsoha'ne ni. That's included my great grandmothers and then la. Do da ete yata'matil my grandma. My other relative too. Aro kuchiko nagit ishchiko. Aju kodo shekei keha'te around the Chaco Canyon. Akho shui taholno, fani taholno'ten. Ba'halchana'to hyu koo, ati taholno. Ati in da'altetoyo olte'da. So da ni shekwa ni chaktar, ani de the largest people, the voter. Akon ni peswa'ha sa an anhyo'nedla. Ufner'tshter da hotte do hyu't nekei haten. O hyu'ti ol'en kes petetee yuholno. Ee beni na e, ni peswa'ha sa an ashatina hotte'tlchitni do ni'tonon siket. Aro, ni neighborsan leni edo, do na chukil ida. Te'va'ben'tara do in de ta counselor, oh insino toryon. That's our neighbors. Aa'ta khototsoha'ne'ti, Chaco Canyon bumpurzon. Ni na'ne ni gi, the artifact size ede na. Kuchiko edo ya yachitana gai westiko. Ti be'na'yo'le olge. Aro in de ta chenlizana. Chinyaa aro le khampund. Etit a't eti delke Chaco Canyon. That's in their history. History de ye'ya'tha. A'la'wo ba'sha'haneshkeinol. Ti de ta'ke'achina'lar kha, na ni gi ba'
It's not even there. Uh, the Ascado Aqui, the Lagana, by the hotel now. It's placed in museums and stored in some of these storage out of state and in Albuquerque. So, I call Yeggo on eating a lot of the Lagana though. Que, that just an issue, I will tell the hotel now. Today, the table not yet. Uh, Hashin's ago, um. Eh, yeah, Yeggo, uh, I call it now. At the key to the enemy, gee, eh, eh, do, do eh, yeah. But they should be happy now, so do you own that? And she's done, so I do, I just can't load, so Hashin's ago, so, um. When they need help, go, so at she know, this is all. I could call you, Yeggo, but oh, eh, yeah, eh, me, she, it's a, it's a, oh, do. They, uh, as soon as need depth, Holland. Uh, Hashin's ago, eh, that's, uh, that's conflict of interest. Why wasn't our leaders notified? Even our president of the Navajo Nation and, and our council, okay? A quiet Chaco Canyon, I wish only the Pablo's eh, it's like the governors. That's not right. And these things are like, it's like theft and trespassing. I'm not going to call it government to government. Straight out, it is stealing and it is trespassing. Without our consent and without our permission. Of course, our elders lived there and we just lost an elder. Uh, not too long ago. She grew up there. Our late mom, grandma, Mary Jane Harrison. I could, yeah, I'm that nearly caught in that now. Though Hashine, they love you on the house now. Of course, eh, oh, yeah. Uh, why, gee, Hashin's ago. Uh, bah, this is the sendo, Yeggo, that's eh. Uh, he can not, I know, he need it. Did they, yeah, not a hard as those so. You raised a buffer zone, eh, do, do Chaco fans, he need eh, yeah, that. Oh, Joe money met now, so let don't know what you go yet, that just had, this is how it add up, I had to just get that. He crown quite though, Lake Valley could do, that's a joke. They find the ten buffer zone, oh, and I'll tell you, oh, you're cheating, eh, yeah. Of course, eh, eh, why, gee, eh, bah, this is, so, why, gee, eh, eh, yeah, oh, K, yeah, many, ah, me. Of course, this, I mean, lay the state of New Mexico, indeed, what eh? Of course, I, Hashine, la. Uh, didn't she, she didn't eh, eh, I, eh, at all, well, he, so, why, gee? His, ah, in, let me, you, John, I can't. Could he, eh, eh, at all, a John, he can't, eh, yeah, da. Of course, the question is, can't, uh, no, ah, the eh, she had, do. Yeggo, la, I behind see, she, yeah, uh, Mr. Charlie. Do in the ah, me, he, she, do, I, eh, at her. And that's, nice, I, eh, que, Hashin's ago, eh, his, ah, he has, he's, he, yes, me, eh, then. Be at her, so I don't want to do it, la, to, huh, need, ah, so. And how, Joe, bye, eh, the hotel, he. I would, I, eh, bah, this is, the buffer zone, oh, yeah, he, oh, K, that's, or she, who's. They needed to trash it. Let the people that live there decide. But I, eh, bah, this is, though, I had, shut the, uh, um. She, eh, no, she need, do, not, ah, me, uh, Hashin's ago, chapter official, no, she need, do. Uh, doing your best you can to, uh. Serve the people, also, do, he can't, eh, it's a, eh, so, it's, do, it's, do, that, eh, he. Eh, da, of course, the, he, eh, in the Chaco Canyon area, of course, the. It's, eh, not the, God, oh, eh, the, yeah, the, oh, no, but not the, yeah, do, it's, eh. Out of our own pocket. So, what, oh, eh, uh, me, she, cause, ah, me, again, me, she, oh, I, eh, gee. Could start preservation, I should, eh. Please have your documents on hand for every community. Land board official, please work with your chapter official. And that is considered, and J. Is considered as a sacred site. Oh, do, in the, to, she, in the, hold on, do. Do, in the, hey, oh. It's a, she, why, gee, huh, need, oh, leh, eh, she, the whole, but the house, gee. At the, me, she, had, half, me, she, hello. At the, yeah, in, he, shut the whole eh. So, I, 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 Hashit, ah, he, it's, it is, and the, hold on, eh, do. Yeggo, that's eh. Do, in the, eh, she had, do, she, eh, no, she need, eh, ah, no, it's, oh. But I, eh, been, he, she, had this, eh, do, shah, oh, I, eh, do, eh, she, eh, but eh, he, he, since, and I. Thank you.
I hear, Ms. Ms. Ardiso, I don't, he, she, I, 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 gee. Eh, yeah, huh.
What is, what's wrong with the net, aren't we, we're supposed to respect each other? It seems like time and time, then all of a sudden, I seem to be the bad person because I advocate for oil and gas. My late uncle, Andy Navertill, passed away. He lives in, he used to live in Chaco. Says, "Daughters, please, help my family." After I passed, I got an illness from cancer, but I know my cancer is not coming from oil and gas or emissions and stuff. Why do they always want to blame substance? And he said, "Our Creator made these natural resources for us and we benefit from it, from our land. Make sure when I pass over that you will continue to advocate for oil and gas and that my family will continue to use the, the resources." So I'm saying this, I, I'm glad everybody's on, I'm glad everybody's listening. I know that BIA tries their best to do these amendments or laws because I've been in the RO six meetings, started a long time ago. After my father, Henry P. Jesus, found out that the system was doing us wrong with people getting their revenue. Then we joined the lawsuit with Eloise Cabell. That was a long haul too, until Obama signed it. So it's not a new thing to us and our family. So I just want to state that I'm really, really happy to hear that you guys are going to DC. We don't need a buffer zone. There's been no accidents or anybody dying from, um, oil and gas. There's only people dying for substance abuse, meth, alcohol. And, um, please, just, just keep advocating for us and we don't need no buffer zone. And that's all we, I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Jesus. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? From the Alatis side there? Just one more.
Yeah.
Yes, so my name is Lorraine Raphael. I'm speaking for my mother, Lily Comanche. She's also here with me. And, um, I would go-
Could you say Lorraine again? Lorraine? Lorraine, what's your last name?
Lorraine Raphael. My name is Lorraine Raphael.
Thank you.
I'm from Lybrook. And I also, um, like to express the, what Daniel, um, Councilman, uh, Daniel So expressed about Lybrook, about the methane plant and the methane cloud and all that over Lybrook and so forth. I worked with the, the school there, the elementary school, under the guy, instead of Guyana. And I was a physical ed teacher there. And, um, but it's been shut down. There's only like thirty-two students there as, as we speak, um, to this present day. But I also want to express that not only was I coached there, but I was also, um, a former student. And the, the old school was set across from a petroleum natural gas plant. And I went to school there from fifth grade through eighth grade. And I, I know a bunch of people that, um, went to school there during those years. Um, and I can recall and I can tell you, um, that most of the students that went there, a lot of them didn't suffer any kind of illness from the plant. Um, although every day when we went to school, there was petroleum, you could smell the propane, the pro- the propylene or whatever was coming out, um, from that plant. Uh, but we still went to school there every day. Nothing happened to any of us. And the methane now, they tell us it's odorless, uh, uh, you can't see it or anything. But yet during the visit with Holland, I read an article saying that they had special goggles to see this methane. Um, well, I, I'd like to clear that up. Um, there's no such thing because I worked with the oilfield companies for twenty-one years. I was a code welder. I went out in the oil field when I was just a, a young lady. I worked on some rigs. And I even went on a tour with, uh, one of the companies when they first started coming out to, um, ask for leases and I worked, uh, we went with, uh, tour with WPX. Um, they showed us all the precautions and all the, the steps they had to go through just to start a horizontal well. And it wasn't no joke because even in, just in a welding shop, building these vessels and stuff that hold these, uh, these fluids and so forth, you have to have, to go through special training. And they don't just send people out to the oil fields and tell them, "Look in a goggle and that's methane." They don't tell you that. You have to go to a class and you have to take all these precautions to understand what, what the body, what the bo- how the body reacts to it and what kind of precautions to take. So all these dat- all this data that I'm hearing about right now throughout this meeting that, um, the tri-chapters say they have, we haven't seen any public notification of, uh, high levels of methane, uh, contaminated water, um, uh, dust in the air. And we, we haven't seen any of that to the public. In my opinion, if somebody is concerned about the public, they will immediately go out and issue a notice, a warning in these high-level areas and give us data. But we haven't seen that. I live right there at the, at the, um, the county line of San Juan County and Rio Riba. Um, there are horizontal lines going right underneath us and there's, there has been since the early seventies, as I recall from the eighties, when I was a little enough to understand. Because there are, um, pipelines that go through there, through rightways. And even at that, they were really cautious of how they did that. And if there was exposed lines, uh, my, my folks, my family from there, they would all go to, um, like FEMA, BIA, and then they would notify them of these lines exposed and so forth. And they would come out and they would inspect the lines and x-ray them to see if there's any leaks. So we do understand the process of, the due process for safety regulations as far as, um, oil and gas are concerned. Um, and we didn't learn that overnight. We, this is something that I think all these elders have expressed so far too. Because when they got their patents for their land, when their forefathers, foremothers got their patents for their land, they had to utilize that land in twenty-five years, then they would get their patent. And all these people that I know, including, uh, Mr. Atencio and his family, have signed leases. And it's very sad that you can double dip. But that's just the harsh reality. For us to hear that people that are pushing back are still getting royalties from oil and gas, but they're still wanting to shut down these people that haven't even got their leases signed from the Chaco area. I'll be honest, we have, um, allot, allotments that are bordering that five-mile buffer. If it goes into ten, then, you know, we're, we're, we're just, we're, I'll look. I, I would believe that's how you say it, but I don't believe in luck, so.
Honorable Rick Nez-
I would, I would say, I would say that, um-
Uh, Ms. Raphael? Do you, um, pause one moment?
Yes.
Honorable Chairman So, um, what, what did you need, sir?
Uh, uh, Shenanti, uh, you started off the meeting to say, "Let's not be, uh, talking against each other." We're talking about an issue. And for some of the commenters to start mentioning names. Uh, we talked about issues. Uh, Craigy, uh, that what you, of course, oh, you do, uh, Craigy, the, the principles you laid down, eh? Um, again, uh, let, uh, Chanelle Sam Sage also talk about. Of course, Craigy, so, eh, by, uh, by the, no, send all this. You see, eh, Craigy, the, uh, the aspects of community health and the safety, uh, those parts, eh, Craigy, be hey, see. Of course, Craigy, no, no, how about so case to leave? But, eh, has see to leave, Shenanti. Uh, Chair, uh, Rick Nez, who, Resource and Development Committee.
Uh, Chairman Daniel So, Koro, ah, in gee gee. Uh, Koro, Kora, huh, see, he gee. Oh, ah, huh, no, send the now, uh, gee, gee, eh, eh, royalties, be, huh, no, huh, that's all you get, eh, that, oh, none of you, uh, uh, oh, huh, none of, oh, do, hey, it, oh, she, bah, doh, see, he gee. Eh, oh, no, how we desh, oh, though. Uh, she, be, can, eh, di, the Richard, be gay, Koro, bah, he desh, oh, so. Uh, ah, be, da, ah, ah, be, da, ah, huh, see, yeah, di, the, now, uh, gee, gee. So, eh, gee gee, she, no, where the, oh, there. Uh, she, uh, oh, no, eh, to, oh, there, uh, Ms. Raphael?
Okay.
Ms. Raphael?
So I was just saying, yes, I was just saying that it's a sad thing that officials have a final say in all this. When we all do know that the base of it is practically money. Regardless of what we're talking about, it's always coming down to that. And we're still doing it, even after five hundred years. We're still fighting over land. And it seems like there's no end to it. There's not going to be an end to it, regardless of what anybody says. But I appreciate the RDC for standing up for our rights, the Alatis, and how it, it's going to affect us, the Alatis in all of this, this, um, buffer zone. And I appreciate it because this is the first administration, the prior administration did not, they didn't turn a year to, to us to hear our pleas, our families' pleas. But I appreciate the ears, the, and the, and the leadership that you're taking to, um, Washington DC to speak. And the letters that you have sent, I appreciate it. And I apologize for calling people out. So I appreciate that, uh, the time. Thank you.
Good luck, yeah, Ms. Raphael, Koro, he, 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 gee. Uh, oh, la, go, eh, ha, na, di, ni, nde, eh, jo, nde, oh, huh, eh, to, eh, la, eh, she, be, ah, st, ah, che, di, hada, huh, so, gee, gee, ben, eh, huh, eh, to, eh, to, eh, to, eh, to, uh, she, Mr. Richard, be gay, bah, he, oh, ask, eh, gee. Uh, uh, di, Koro, uh, Heritage and Historic Preservation, has, ah, je, if she sacred sites, that, eh, eh, to, ah, je, and the, has, gee, gee, be, but, had it, eh, gee, and he, uh, uh, to, Mr. Begay?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
First star six, uh, Mr. Begay, if you would, to unmute.
Mister, Mister Chairman, excuse me. Um, I just wanted to point out that, um, it's unfair to let only allotment owners in opposition have a say in this comment. Um, there are allotment owners besides the tri-chapter area, people that, um, are, are for this buffer zone and it should be fair that our voices should be heard in this meeting too. Um, I know that there's a couple of us that want to speak also. So if you'd allow us the time, um, we'll be quick and concise.
And what is your name?
Uh, my name is Lauren Howland. I have allotments in the five-mile buffer zone that's proposed and the ten-mile. I have allotments, um, and my fa- my family is also allotment holders for, in Navajo Nation too, um, in Blanco Canyon and in the Naiyee chapter area. Um, my allotments, um, on my own are from the Naiyee chapter area too.
Um, I would be unfair to allow more people to speak because four people spoke on the other side, Mr. Daniel So, Mr. Samuel Sage, Brandon Vilevich, and Mario Atencio, who spoke. And then on the other side, we have Mr. Andrew Charlie, Ms. Eda Arviso, Deloria, Jesus, as well as Lorraine Raphael. So that was four and four. We pretty much would like to set up another meeting. And it's probably not going to be our only meeting. We have met so far three times at Naiyee, once at Crown Point. So we will continue to have these discussions until someone from the federal level decides to come and listen to the Alatis and the people within that region. So, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and start closing this meeting and allow Mr. Richard Begay to do his presentation. Mr. Begay?
Hadid Ash?
Oh, Hadid Ash.
Thank you, Mister Chair, um, and good afternoon to all the, um, the committee members and the public who are, uh, online. Um, thank you for those comments. Um, I've learned a lot from them. And it also has confirmed some of the, um, issues that we have been talking and pushing from our end and Historic Preservation Department. Uh, first, um, I want to be clear that the Navajo Nation or the Navajo people did not propose the buffer zone. The buffer zone was, uh, done, or the discussions about that was done mostly at the behest of the Pueblo Indian leaders to protect Chaco sites. Uh, that's basically what that buffer zone is about. Um, and again, Wondroak, or, and did not propose the buffer zone. There's been lots of discussions, like the one today, about the buffer zone. But we want to be clear that Wondroak, the Navajo Nation Government is not proposing the buffer zone. That is done, that, those discussions were discarded. Um, we're begun with BIA and BLM and the Department of Interior. Again, uh, mostly at the, um, the request of the Pueblo tribes in, uh, Arizona, New Mexico, and also with Hopi in Arizona. Having said that, let me do say that, again, that it's mostly about the archaeology sites. The buildings that you see like Kinyaa and Pueblo Patata and, you know, hundreds of other sites that are within, uh, and within that proposed buffer zone, the five or the ten. Discussions about the buffer zone have very little to do about protecting Navajo sites. We heard earlier about people talking about sacred places, home sites, burials of, of their ancestors, and none of those discussions, none of those issues were, uh, uh, inserted in any of those discussions, uh, the buffer zone. The buffer zone, huh, none of you, eh, to, the, na, ni, da, to, to, eh, um, le, kiss, ah, ni, she, gee, gee, eh, to, no, eh, ben, eh, kaba, eh, be, gee, be, gee, eh, eh. Di the buffer zone, huh, no, di the, um, a, nah, sa, z, b, la, huh, sa, oh, le, Kinyaa, da, da, eh, gee. Eh, de, ya, n, se, case, oh, ne. Di, the, ne, be, i, na, eh, eh, la, gee, uh, um, uh, 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 kula, squish, hada, eh, eh, do, sa, ni. How, huh, da, had, yin, oh, no, huh, sa, oh, da, eh, da, ne. Da, sh, no, da, do, da, huh, ju, t, ha, do, ku, ze, eh, da, eh. Just, cha, do, da, ha, lo, ni, he, sa, ni, he, sa, ni, ni, he, sw, eh, huh, na, sh, jo, la, da, ne. Di, eh, do, ya, n, se, case, oh, ne, da, a, nah, sa, z, b, la, huh, sa, oh, eh, ya, n, se, case, oh, eh, ben, i, na, eh, buffer zone, ne. Di, eh, gee, tha, huh, z, no, do, eh, do, eh. It's very important to understand that, um, first and foremost, that those, the, the discussions about the buffer zone are basically to protect the archaeological, Chaco and archaeological sites. None of those discussions ever talked, none of the, uh, federal officials, even the Pueblos, have ever mentioned the protecting Navajo sites. Burials, sacred places, um, eh, da, eh, no, da, about, eh, gee. Those were not part of the buffer zone discussions, even to this day. So that's important to know. The, um, in the Eastern Agency, many of you live there. Um, and you know that there are lots of archaeological sites. And many of them, just a small portion of them have been recorded. And so we have that, some of that information in our records in Wondroak. Those cultural resources, as they call them, can be, um, uh, archaeological sites, a, nah, sa, z. They can be, um, uh, sacred places. They can be historic home sites, uh, ho, ke, ho, ganda, da, eh, gee. Sacred places, uh, and, uh, nah, da, huh, ni, huh, da, oh, da, da, huh, t, ha, lo. Those, some of those have been recorded. And those are in our records in Wondroak. Some of those have been recorded because of the oil and gas activity out there. The, um, companies who are doing the work out there, they're permitted, um, must be, must have an archaeological survey done. Most of that survey work is done by archaeologists who are hired by the companies to do that work. BLM, BIA, and the Navajo Nation and Wondroak oversees that process. So we, yes, occasionally we do, uh, government-to-government consultation on, uh, certain projects. And when we, when the archaeologists are out there, we ask them, and they're part of the permit requirement is to talk to the local chapters and to ask people who live out there about any places that is important to them, like burials or sacred sites. Or a, nah, sa, z, lots of those, a, nah, sa, z, have, um, Navajo history associated with them. So that's what they're required to do. Um, and that is part of the environmental review process. And we are a small part of that whole process. Now, it's also important to know that Historic Preservation does not approve oil and gas drilling activities. That's, that's a federal activity. BIA and BLM oversee that. We just, oh, provide recommendations, uh, on the cultural resources. So that's important to know. Because the, um, buffer discussions and the, the oil and gas development activities out there, the Department of Interior about two years ago set aside one million dollars for tribes to do an ethnographic study, uh, of the Chaco area. And all that means is that they gave us money to ask people about their cultural resources. Um, that money was split between the Pueblos and the Navajo Nation. The Navajo Nation got four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of that one million dollars. We have that money and we actually, um, because we don't have the staff or the expertise in our office to do the work, um, we contracted it out to a company out of Farmington called the Netra Do Cultural Resources. And Rhea Martin, who runs the company and owns the company, is a Navajo person, uh, uh, and she's on this call. So she can chime in if she needs to. Um, so that contract, what that contract will do is go visit the ten or so chapters that surround Chaco Canyon and ask about what's important to them in terms of cultural resources. They've also got questions about, um, what, you know, what their concerns are about the oil and gas development, uh, activities out there. Um, and some of the questions they'll be asking also include, you know, the, the family's history on the, uh, in Eastern Agency. Um, some of them, of course, uh, maybe, uh, might have clan history associated with Chaco Canyon. So there's a whole list of, um, um, issues that they want to talk to people about. So they, that contract, um, has started and they know that Larena has been out and notified all the chapters in, uh, and in around Chaco Canyon. And I believe they have actually completed one interview. So they'll be interviewing people for the next couple of months. Um, and, uh, she is, again, on the call and, uh, hopefully, uh, wrote down some of the names that, some of the names of the people who spoke, so, uh, it, so you might be able to, uh, so you might get a call from her or a visit from her so to interview you about these. Now, what that project is supposed to do is, once a report is done, it'll be given back, uh, copy will be given to the Department of Interior because they're funding the agency. But we also expect to give, uh, that, um, report to the BIA and the BLM. And what the intent of that was, of the report, is to ensure that the federal agencies are aware of some of the issues, um, that are involved in oil and the gas development activities in the Eastern Agency. So if there's a project out there, they, they, they can reference that report and make some decisions about how to go forth in terms of develop, developing or permitting oil and gas development out there. Um, some of, of course, uh, this will be a public document. Um, and we'd be happy to, um, provide a copy to anyone who requests it, again. But that report is not expected to be, um, completed or delivered until, uh, later this year, probably in the fall. So, um, so that's what I want to talk about, uh, uh, and, and leave with you. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Mister Chair? Thank you very much, Mister Begay, for your presentation. Shenanti, no, Seneki, honorable members of the Resources and Development Committee. Do you have any questions or comments? Honorable Stewart, you have the floor.
Oh, yeah, this is my chairman, uh, Nez, I don't, that, you know, I care. Though, she, I, yes, she, I thought, uh, uh, Mister Walker, other than the staff. Uh, Koro, you know, I'm, I'm, Mr. So, Daniel So, uh, Koro, gee. Alatis, I'm, I'm, gee, those opposing and those for. I don't, Shenella, I thought, Mister Begay, for your presentation, Anna, when he, huh, song, for today, um, Saturday. Uh, of course, this, at this time, boy, eh, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for the expressions that were, um, shared today with us, again, as RDC members. I shouldn't touch it, I'm, 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 I forgot my phone in the house, never, just, non, son, eh. When your comments might be getting there, so I got on the call, Shenaka, so excuse my tardiness on that. Uh, kinda, but I did hear a good portion of the, um, presentation on both sides. I, I know that with this committee, eh, yeah, we try to work and, and help everybody the best way we know how. As I say, we can't please everybody at the same time, and then we do the best that we can on behalf of the, the community members and on behalf of the Navajo Nation Government itself. Uh, yeah, he, nah, this, did, oh, call, can, the, oh, oh, just, oh. As you stated, so, Shenella, you know, we will continue, you know, to listen to both sides and to continue to work with Historic Preservation, other, um, areas as well within the nation to continue to, to do what's best, you know, as, as leaders, to express ourselves in the rest way that we know how to kind, find common ground on, on both sides of, of these talks. It's not to, we're favoring one or the other, but we're trying to do the best that we can on behalf of everybody that, that, that we listen to. And then we thank everybody again for their words that they shared today, the teachings that we're sharing today again, so.
I hear you, Honorable Stewart, thank you very much. Honorable Members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Chairman, Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Everyone, this call, thank you for your input today. It's very much appreciated and valued and, you know, just listening and understanding. Uh we have a lot of work ahead of us and a lot of um advocate advocacy to uh put forth and, you know, I I just wanted to resonate that. Uh and thank you to the speakers. I did think uh Shuchai, uh Honorable Daniel So and his team earlier, and I want to say thank you to the Alatis as well. Um Shada, Andrew Charlie, uh, I don't know, Ms. Edar Viso. I don't um. Delora, and I think it was Miss, was it Comanche, I believe, was the last one. But uh yeah, just thank you to the to the Alatis as well. Um, you know, I I I guess my whole thing goes back to April of twenty nineteen and and what I witnessed at Chaco Canyon and how our people were treated at Chaco Canyon, and that's what I'm sticking by. Is that whole day and how our people were just merely brushed aside. And for me, this is a people issue. There's always two sides to a story. And I think the first side has already been told. And now it's time for the federal government to hear the second side. Understand, this is not tribal trust land. This is not, and this is not tribal land we're talking about. This is individual Indian allotments. I I am, I I am, money's come from this. And these are allotments that were designated by the federal government. This is not tribal lands, like like Ms. Shada mentioned earlier, and Mister Charlie Sinasti, that's a whole different issue. That's a whole separate issue because that's on trusts. These are, these are checkerboards we're talking about. These were, these were given to the allot, the Alatis through air, heirs, as heirs. And it's almost, I I don't want to say it's almost like private property, but it's not, it's the same concept. And I I I'll, I appreciate, and I appreciate the the discussion we had today and, you know, just just, just understandably, um thinking, what more do we need to do, or how far we need to take this discussion further. Um, Shunata, Otto, um, thank you for your, your um, when I asked for you to listen, you all listened. And of course, we'd listen to both sides. But more importantly, um distinguishing our people against or versus other tribes, who do we listen to in that case? Do we listen to other tribes or do we listen to our own people? And I think that's real important for us to consider as well. And for me, that's a a a a common uh situation that I have to really take seriously. You know, with all due respect to other tribes, you know, they they can have their own advocacy, yes, but we have our own too. And just sticking by what Mister Richard Begay said, that's a very important statement, what he said. Nowhere was in a ten-mile buffer zone or or Navajo sacred sites where they ever mentioned. And if you read or if you study Navajo oral history, especially in that area, the clan origins, and understand that we have sacred sites out there too. That, 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 you know, it it that, 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 that doesn't fit well, doesn't sit well as well. So eh, Shunata, we've got a lot of homework ahead of us. So thank you again. Uh I think Honorable Charlene So did join us, uh Chairman. Uh I think she's on the line as well, but uh I just want to say thank you, Shuchai, Daniel So, Otto, uh you and your team, uh Mychee, uh Sam Sage, Otto, Mister Tencio and Brandon, uh and then our lotis of all, uh really appreciate this discussion. Uh definitely up for another discussion um uh here soon, Chairman. Um at some point, it'd be nice to have a, all of us sit down in, maybe in person and have a formal discussion. That's what we got to do at some point and, you know, um it's a very important topic. And this is something that came to us or has been ongoing ever since we took office in January of twenty nineteen, and this has been ongoing for years. Uh the the proposed buffer was supposed to be at twenty miles. Ten miles was uh then amended. It's been going off about fifteen years. Five miles that we passed as Nabi Kids, it was a compromise, half of ten. And I know a lot of our lotis didn't want a buffer zone at all. They were saying zero. So five is half, meaning the federal government halfway, but things took place, uh happened for a reason. In November, the announcement was made, but we've just got to go from there and uh continue to advocate for our people strongly. So, eh, Shunata, thank you very much, Chairman.
Yeah, Honorable Freeland. Otto Shumayezha, Honorable Charlene So, could you introduce yourself, please? First, Star Six.
Chairman, if I could have the floor one more time after um my little sister.
Okay. Honorable Charlene So. Uh Honorable Freeland, back to you.
I forgot to mention one other thing, uh Shunata, Chairman. Um just mentioning or thinking about what Mister Begay had mentioned. Would it be possible for him to give RDC his recommendations? Um, you know, I I just think it's it's real important for him to provide that input. Um his comments and recommendations on this topic, maybe to RDC. Um that way we can understand the perspective of of his office as HPD. So, eh, Shunata, uh, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Mister Begay, would it be possible that you provide us your recommendation? Requested by Honorable Freeland.
Chairman.
Mister Begay.
Chairman, this is Belinda.
Miss Yako.
Yes, hi. Uh, yes, Richard actually just let me know that he got kicked off the call and he's gonna get back on as soon as he can. But I did let him know what the question was.
Okay, thank you. Myaiza, Honorable Charlene So, are you able to introduce yourself now?
Chairman.
Yes.
I I don't see um Delegate So, um Charlene So on the line. Um I'm not sure if she got knocked off as well, but just letting you know for the record. Back to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Kealan Begay Junior, you have the floor.
Honorable Chair of Resource and Development Committee. If I could make, uh, this is Delegate Daniel So, if I could make some closing remarks.
Uh Honorable Chairman So, I definitely will give you some time after a while, uh perhaps after Honorable Begay. Honorable Begay.
Uh Chairman, I can't understand this. Uh it always sounded like I was in a uh history class. Um statement comments that were given by uh Mychee and everyone else on the line. Uh giving a good history of the situation. But eh the most important thing is, eh, I, as I always say, on the council floor. The local community. They can see the, the, they can see that. It will really affect the community, the Navajo people, uh the the issue at hand. Because they could argue, need a lot, and that that free land, and that that checkerboard, and that that now. All of my five chapters surrounds the Chindee uh area. I I would think that it's almost similar to our Navajo people seeking uh because uh could you depend on. As far as uh grazing permit. With Washington. I could. And call Eastern Agency. I do. Do you know the agency down, could our resource development committee? That's the that, that, uh the Foreign Affairs Agency, and then myself, and then the two uh North or Western Agency. Uh Vice Chair Walker and uh uh Delegate Daniel. I lost your brother, uh Mister Wilson Stewart, do you for the finance down. That's the composition of RDC. I could call. I could. I would really, I will rely on the decision uh of of with the best interest of the Navajo people. I could. And then. Appreciate Mister Chairman Nez indicated that he would uh uh conduct another um uh meeting on behalf of our Navajo people. Do the question. Co, it's really uh make it difficult. What end it, it is. I could call, there's much uh information to learn, much information to grasp, and much information to dissect, to really make a determination of what we really need to do to help our Navajo people, those opposing and those are supporting. How do we compromise? How do we work together? How do we get things and get things done? Uh what can we lay down to make sure that the future generation will not have a similar uh uh situation uh for five to ten more years from now? Chairman, uh this need uh will really rely on the uh, could all my brother, Mychee and other uh colleagues that uh represents uh the Eastern Agency and of course the whole overall Navajo Nation Council. I could call, but nonetheless, uh the overall and the ultimate is that we really need to uh really have a better uh assessment of the uh uh the input and recommendation by the Navajo people that lives in the area they are affected. Basic service. One of my chapter. You gotta have the home site lease in order to get water line and power line. So there's a whole lot that we can talk about, Chairman, but I appreciate that the uh calling the meeting and everyone participating, so. If there needs to be additional action on the council floor, or how do we specifically uh make a a statement uh of our trip to Washington? People think that being a delegate, you have the overall knowledge of everything, all the way from uh health, education, road, uh natural resource, and every other social uh environment situation. But it's always a matter that we need to really have an understanding about uh a situation to really make a determination how we need to help our Navajo people. Uh yes, this always be, uh it won't be go in your favor. Uh maybe goes in uh uh in opposite direction where we get more uh people uh making statements, so. So with that, Chairman, I appreciate the time and then hoping that everyone uh uh have a good weekend. Chairman, that concludes my statement.
Yeah, Shutella, Honorable Begay. Before I hand over the time to make a closing statement by. Yes, it's Hela, Honorable Begay, before I hand over the time to make a closing statement by Honorable Daniel So, shenan, I, R D C, lta'haspa, na na, xi, any other statements, um, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, Chairman, do, committee members, shenan, ta, a do, ni he staff, so, a do, uh, shenan, ta, do, beisbanas anit, ani, leniki, itche'ke, uh, beispa'ha, ne, be ye, xi, krei, a do, where, um, uh, isnohlaan ki, do, la, ha'da hisotsi, cha, his tri'sa zani, ako, di, uh, Thomas Walker, eh, adishna, ako, di, R D C, eh, a ta', eh, shahoh, uh, plathna, cheda, bo, ba'hen, sun, do, shi, llo, di, eh, eh, go, a do, uh, kai, it's, uh, be, ta'da'itsi ki, shi, da, uh, uh, quin sun, be, ta'itsi ki, ita', da, a, a, shakona, be ke, oh, eh, na, shet, ni, do, jro, jro, hut a, ta'apohnet, sa, sa, be ya da ti, huh, shenan, ta, di'ta, nsa da, ti, so, di'ta, ha'da hatzi, he, shi, da, uh, quin sun, lta', ako, a do, kue, uh, shen, a do, uh, Honorable Daniel So, uh, eh, kue, ti, xi, ita'ba huin, ti, do, leh, da no, uh, Resource Development Committee, eh, pin, ke, do, jro, bena che', ko, eh, eh, hut a, xi, ya, eh, uh, eh, ya, eh, ha'zan, lta', a do, a she, hut a, be, be ke'ha, ni, lzen, do, ne, ne, ch'eh, ne, dne'ba, de, ni, lni, shi, go, go, eh, eh, hut eh, go, a do, uh, be, ha'da'si, he, benzas, ke, si, ki, eh, di, Washington, leh, he, federal government, a do, ni he, dne'ani, leniki, uh, ni he, ni he, tahika, kue, uh, eh, da, ni he, lha'zan, an, ni he, lha'ho, da, eh, akon, hinat, uh, don, hinat, uh, don, he behza, uh, don, he ke'ya, don, he dne'ani, leniki, kue, eh, hut a, eh, alha, bji, tahika. Ako, jro, jro, Washington, federal government, do, hut eh, a, be dne'ni, ti, eh, da, ni, dline, di, eh, da, jro, ta'asati, hut a, eh, tahika, hut eh, li, shjan, dan, le, go, kut a, eh, ya, eh, ha'zan, di, na, ta, ban, di, ti, leniki, as a, um, uh, an indigenous nation, because as a tribal nation, sovereign nation, eh, a di, go, nsi, zi, do, a di, oh, ye'lik, go, eh, ah, nsi, ki, so, a do, le, be'ni, oh, jro, hut a, eh, eh, ha'zan. Ako, nsa, ye, sa'ta, ako, kudo, kui, xi, ye'lik, it, isis, uh, go, kudi, di, lha'ho, eh, a, di, lha'ha, ki, eh, eh, ana, ot, leh, lta'ah, hut a, a'xi, ba huin, ti, leh, tchota, a do, di, ta, tsilna, zni, ni he, zi, na, zni, lo, la, jro, jro, uh, ni he, za, ba, da huin, ti, go, kudje, eh, a'je, ni he, zi, li, gi, hut eh, do, go, slid, hut eh, go, a do, na, wait, na, na, a, na, na, a, hut sa, a'je, tchota, he, da, ni, leniki, bena, hut eh, ki, je, eh, do, a, ta, di, di, ni, de, ba huin, ti, ni, a, a, hut a, eh, na, eh, di, ki, do, iti, lha'ha, ki, ba huin, lo, go, sa, be, hada, di'ta, ha, de shi, da'ho, eh, 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 lanj, da'ho, eh, go, nta, di, che, eh, ba na, da huin, ti, do, leh, jro, da, di, no, go, ako, Washington, eh, e xin, lta'ne'ka, ko, di, di, a do, le, ke'ya, do, tro, akon, ni he, zi, de shuni, ki, jro, eh, la, ba, da huin, ti, bena che', eh, tribal consultation, ha ni, a, go, eh, 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 do, leh, eh, do, da, eh, be'ka, ho, do, leh, ha ni. Ako, kudo, uh, dne'ani, leniki, do, ni he, uh, ne, benan, a, da, ni, leniki, jro, eh, ha'ji, ta, quin sun, shi, tribal consultation, ha ni, go, eh, in Washington, leniki, eh, be behza, uh, eh, di, ki, eh, be'ka, ho, eh, 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 a di, eh, ye, ha'zi, do, di, ni xin, he, travel consultation policy. Eh, be'ka, ho, eh, do, leni, ha ni, a do, eh, do, oh, be, be ke, ni, ka, a do, a, de, besil, da'leh, di, kue, a'na, do, zhi, da, ni, di, no, a do, huen, zaxa, ha'itsi. Eh, di, ba ha'itsi, da, ni, di, no, yo, ke'ha, ni, eh, akut e, go, ako, du kuii, go, xi, hut eh, di, uh, federal, federal agencies, um, change, be da ha'zan, part service, what, B L M, what, B I A, I H S, B I E, da, da, ye, E P A, da, de, kut, di, xi, federal agencies, da, holi, go, ako, eh, eh, da, kub, policy, tribal consultation policy, gi, xi, a'la, na, da, eh, eh, a, a, be, da, ye, be da, leni, eh, di, chi, do, il, consultation, do, leh, no, go, a, be, ke'ha, da, ho, li, a, be, ya, da, ho, la, a, do, kudo, eh, oh, washnet, an, he, di, ni, uh, be, shleji, ni, di, ni, leniki, do, do, dne'et, eh, ya, da. A, de, eh, yo, ke'ha, ni, oh, a, de, si, da'leh, huen, zaxa, ha'itsi, ni, di, no, eh, che, eh, be'ka, ni, il, go, eh, eh, kuakigi, shenan, ta, do, do, xi, di, che, eh, ba ha'itsi, da, da, che, eh, ban, zas, ki, so, sa'ta, jro, de shi, go, eh, do, eh, do, di, na, sa, di, a, gi, xi, uh, a, a, be'ni, oh, ya, eh, xin, na'ha, ch'inda, zeb, na, shi, di, eh, do, di, ni he, so, ke, da, zeh, ah, na, sa, di, zah, zeh, da, be'ka, ho, do, go, jish, di, eh, ni xin, he, ke'ha, ni he, che, ya, ti, oh, ni he, di, lha'ha, ki, ni xin, ni xin, ni he, behza, uh, leniki, ke, go, ha'le, ni he, ke'ya, pa'ka, ho, hut e, go, jro, hut a, na, ho, di, do, di, consultation, do, leh, la, e xin, ni xin, he, ke'ya, uh, be, de, ti, go, do, pa'ka, gi, oh, hut e, go, bena che', tribal consultation, ba huin, to, jro, go, ni xin, he, behza, uh, leniki, be'ka, ho, Washington, eh, washnet, hut eh, di, illo, ni he, zustal, eh, di, or, kilhi, ke'ha, da, kue, ba ha'itsi, huen, zago, eh, 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 hut a, eh, ni he, tribal consultation, eh, ni he, lli, do, hut a, ni, zin, du, di, che, eh, da, eh, lta'ho, a, eh, oh, ke, jia, ki, eh, hut e, go, eh, uh, bena, ha'ha, uh, akkuakigi, ye, oh, oh, ba ha'itsi, sun, shenan, ta, oh, 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 nsa, ke, so, eh, a, ban, si, ke, so, leh, shenan, ta, isha, shi, ta, she, ba na, itsi, da, a, jor, la, ban, suna, ban, suna, sa, ke, so, quin sun, ako, ako, a, da, blugan, ki, shi, ba ha'itsi, da, o xin, you, da'ist, a, do, a, da, ta, 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 she, a, wolo, na, da, a, da, ni, he, da, do, ni, a, di, nek, eh, so, che, eh, 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 jor, ni he, su, da, a, kon, ni he, da, di, lha'ha, ki, ita', oh, a, do, di, um, uh, hinan, ta, uh, do, nha'na, ni, shi, ruch, begay, ya, ha'zi, ki, do, jro, eh, Washington, eh, eh, lta'ho, a'ho, tla'ho, haz, a, a, eh, di, ye, na, a, do, di, ki, sa, ni, a di, da, leniki, she, ya, cha, ul, na, she, he, she, dis, sun, a, kue, eh, ba, eh, gi, sa, jrono, offer zone, ni he, dne'ani, he, di, ni, leniki, eh, do, eh, eh, da, jrona, na, hal, den. Eh, eh, do, a'shi, di, lha', ako, goes back to this tribal consultation, uh, we, we need to define what, what it is that we would like to be consulted on, uh, what areas of policies, do, and what format, under our conditions, especially if the question, policy, and question is on our land, hut eh, go, dne'ani, leniki. Hut a, sa, be ha'da'si, shenan, ta, do, um, a, o xin, hut eh, do, leh, do, she, kue, il, da, zil, na, do, shenan, ta, Chairman Nez, ya, ke'ha, la, leh, na'ha, na, ni, klas, ni, go, be, na, she, hil, lo, di, eh, eh, go, a, do, shenan, ta, committee members, do, ni he, staff, do, uh, da, il, ke, do, go, da, mo, vya, jin, da, go, eh, na, shah, holo, de, shi, shah, da'itsi, oh, da, na, wait, zah, le, bed, a, da, da, Congressman, oh, Halloran, a, da, ta, eh, sh, akut eh, go, nde, kudje, jro, kudje, do, na, ho, eh, oh, aje, xi, eh, eh, do, basa, holo, benye, eh, aje, nda'ali, de, eh, kudje, eh, na, ho, eh, gi, ajo, ajo, ntsa, go, jro, ban, zas, ki, zeb, bena, eh, do, huen, zah, oh, li, ki, shenan, ta. Back to you, Chair, appreciate the time given here.
Ke'ha, la, shenan, ta, Honorable Vice Chair, Thomas Walker, a, do, ba'hen, zi, ki, a, do, shenan, uh, R D C, lta'haspa, na na, xi, before I turn the floor over to Honorable Daniel So. But, uh, so, what, uh, zan, 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 da, di, shk, it's, Hela, a'la, it's, uh, Honorable R D C, any other comments or questions, lta'do, beisbananatsi. At, then, gue, kudo, Daniel So, he, ba, di, eh, sh, a, a, do, na, uh, uh, Mr. Charlie, do, leh, uh, Honorable, shen, na, Daniel So, you have the floor, for your closing statement.
Oh, as she had, la, it's Hela. Honorable Chair of Resource and Development Committee, a, do, um, the other five members of the committee, were all my chairs, my chair committee. Ako, kuakigi, a, do, shik e, do, shidne'ans, the chairs, in, da, ino, sa, ki, do, la, la, zhi, ki, as she had, uh, uh, so, the, jor, eh, uh, ban, sa, ke, si, uh, eh, ha'da hisotsi, zi, kunde, kuakigi, lta', eh, be, de, sh, a, eh, ki, eh, shen, na, leh, Andy Charlie, Andrew Charlie, oh, a, ni, ni, so, ke, ni, na, le, ke, a'la, do, che, da, ki, a, do, kuakigi, lta', oh, it's, uh, da seda, he, na, ch'os, eh, ki, shi, do, bha'achi, eh, ki, lta', oh, da, ni, he, di, eh, a, do, di, kuakigi, haz, an, ki, haz, ki, so, be, da, eh, shklun, dne'ani, ki, eh, kuakigi, eh, ben, asil, eh, shi, do, bha'achi, do, na, ni, shkha, a, do, do, da, eh, shklun, ki, di, ha'da huikha, a, do, kuakigi, lta', kudjo, da, a'jo, ke'ya, ka, sun, le, ki, do, jro, da, on the west mesa, west boundary of Chaco Canyon, part, eh, ki, a, de, eh, kato, grazing permit, a, de, eh, a, do, eh, a, kunde, eh, hun, she, go, somewhere around two dollars an acre, go, be, ken, na, eh, kli, do, lta', eh, kudo, I, I, M, she, eh, ki, huh, uh, lta', a, kunde, she, hen, deh, na, ki, sun, ta, alha, do, klish, mhu, ndal, se, ho, eh, kuakigi, uh, alha, an, de, eh, go, akkuakigi, as she had, some, a, do, na, sa, che, be, ya, che, uh, di, a lot, mene, di, right next door, the seed, so, be ken, or, ye, go, eh, sa, uh, eh, che, um, ni, ke, da, dune, leniki, a, je, eh, lta', che, da, yosh, a, je, eh, lta', yunda, street. Oh, eh, ha, she, de, ni, chi, oh, jro, da, go, di, zeno, eh, a, da, ni, deh, do, eh, eh, a, do, a, de, tada, i, ka, ta, na, she, na, ho, di, eh, a, a, eh, eh, da, di, che, do, kuakigi, eh, han, eh, ki, do, kehui, na, kehui, sun, leniki, be, sh, ha, ha'itsi, ako, kuakigi, lta', eh, as she had, na, leh, ni, zono, eh, yosh, a, do, do, ha'insi, a, do, kuakigi, um, ne, ne, jro, hajor, eh, di, travel consultation, leniki, leh, he, he, eh, eh, hajor, na, ba, do, zi, shenan, ta, eh, jro, Washington, do, do, kro, da, de shnene, ki, ita', eh, do, dne', ye, ke, eh, ka, ke, da, ha, ni, ke, eh, ka, ke, da, ha, ni, ki, eh, eh, tcha, a, na, se, do, leh, iti, sa, do, leh, kad, eh, ya, haz, an, ki, eh, alha, eh, eh, di, iti, sa, ni, kuak, hajor, do, leh, ni, he, eh, kuak, ke'ya, de'ni, ta, oh, a, do, eh, ke'ya, ni, he, da, eh, ti, ke, oh, a, do, eh, che, de'ni, eh, be, kuak, xi, iti, sa, de'ni, ta, eh, kuak, eh, um, leh, quin, so, be, da, eh, shklun, bena, eh, a, be, kuak, xi, tada, tcha. Ako, a, shato, eh, ba, ha'ci, do, leh, do, shato, um, di, the impact, the landscape, impact, another earth, impact to the water, and to the air, and the sacred, jro, eh, a, ta, skida, di, eh, hajor, haz, uh, go, eh, hajon, haz, uh, huin, zin, leh, ko, kad, eh, ya, passing, so, hajon, haz, uh, eh, ta, ch'ho, do, ye, go, ni, ke, na, eh, da, stui, ni, zani, ni, ke, da, dune, leniki, ni, be, je, ke, um, shen, na, a, sh, dune, leniki, eh, oh, 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 yo, kudjo, hut, kub, at, ol, zon, ha, la, eh, di, Washington, haz, uh, a, je, di, me, lo, yeah, a, do, ke'ya, a, ta, eh, eh, ke, da, is, eh, ki, biya'ei, so, eh, lta', eh, eh, Washington, be, be, hasan, ni, ke'ha, eh, hut, eh, di, ye, na, leh, ni, sh, a, do, kuak, eh, eh, hajor, ba, huin, zon, do, leh, da, de shnene, ta, this Historic Preservation Act, eh, a, eh, di, bena, zor, go, ako, am, she, ni, historic, Navajo Nation Historic Preservation Act, eh, a, da, di, di, ni, do, Navajo Nation Consultation Policy, so, am, she, da, di, ni, so, this, uh, di, ta, do, be si, ti, llo, leni, ki, sa, ni, leni, ki, eh, eh, it's a self-determined policy, so, du kui, na, he, she, eh, be, da, ni, sh, ako, akkuakigi, lta', eh, um, hajor, eh, eh, ni, zon, do, leh, hajor, na, do, go, che, da, ni, zin, do, go, um, um, but, uh, L A W, uh, am, she, bena, che, nsa, ke, si, ni, she, we have our own, say, a, eh, ke'ya, a, huil, na, da, say, a, eh, mach, da, ni, zon, say, a, eh, go, kudjo, eh, ni, go, eh, sa, should be, di, next, eh, zit, a, eh, ha'da, ha, sun, oh, kuak, eh, um, meaning, the natural springs, and the gathering places of the water, so, go, da, di, in, on, the, whether it be on a family basis, on a clan basis, or a community basis, a, do, akkuakigi, lta', eh, um, hajor, am, she, be, on, it, that, eh, a, do, go, uh, uh, be, ha, oh, zi, so, dog, um, slid, do, kuak, eh, lta', uh, legislation, introduce, ish, la, eh, you see, bena, che, nsa, ke, si, jro, eh, so, so, zech, eh, tribal cultural property, well, ye, go, oh, yo, uh, di, eh, so, de, ki, ri, ki, do, Washington, eh, do, a, holi, ya, go, eh, oh, yo, ne, ko, da, so, akon, uh, this, uh, do, go, um, slid, we passed the resolution, legislation, ma, bi, tribal cultural property, eh, be, ha, a, kudeh, eh, be, eh, go, hut a, beach, so, dan, eh, hut a, eh, be, da, si, so, a, do, kudje, neli, well, ya, go, Navajo Eastern Land Initiative, huh, eh, ye, de, go, be, la, ot, di, so, oh, eh, you see, ha, jin, ne, a, ne, eh, ki, be, de, eh, oh, a, do, eh, ba, ha'itsi, da, la, dun, eh, a, ni, do, Eastern Navajo Land Commission, so, Resource and Development. So maybe you. Oh. Eh, but he do. That it need. They're me now. Now, nearly. Been nature. You silly. So eh, quite good that. And I sponsored that legislation. So eh. So what eh, yeah. Had issue now. It eh, been Joe. Gallow. I thought eh, but since it's easy eh, so. He eh, I thought how Joe be it. So look, quite good, but I did it. Winzen, you get been nature eh, what. He said, I don't have it. Had a delia. So be it. When the is me. I see now. So it's. But eh, oh, let's. I don't quite get. I don't by. So eh. Oh, I thought so. I know. So. I can go. That's all. Just not he will yeah. Could you. Bill M. Do. U S Geological Survey. I just met you. It's called Twenty Mile Mesa. Who on on which. Dear Mesa. Eh, the. Quite good job. Then it was. Get the. Eh, I don't. But. But either. Because. I get. Didn't cut. But it's good. And eh, la. I don't. I don't. That what. Excuse me. Of course. That's all. I don't. I'm not. But it eh, gee. I don't eh, they can do that eh. See, well, yeah, he. Come. I'm. Yeah, he could. It should be. No, eh, quite good. It's me. They yeah. Of course, eh, eh, I'm not. It could but they eh, gee. I see. I, I. Yeah, I'm dead. Eh, it's cool. Been nature. In the now. Now. You have to. You talk here. You know, like. Eh, yeah, that eh, the quite good. He can make it been nature. But still. Been nature. In that. Well, yeah, he eh. And they led oh, let's. So eh, lounge. But. I yeah. Of course. Um. Sound go eh, but I do. So. The same eh, I did eh, yeah. So I'll. Now, I'm. She. So I. I want to know. I think. He quite good. So um. Um, David J. So she quite good. That's all. The many guy. I was. I like eh. So eh, um, the legal because. But shouldn't me. Bah. I don't. But the. That all in key. That's all eh, quite good. They. They it. Health impact assessment. They believe on a. Healthcare workers. Those people in health policy. And those people that are decision makers. Eh, the. Sure. So. Been nature eh, quite good policy. Didn't do. They have. Yes, eh. That's all eh. Eh, what the. I don't. Uh, twenty seventeen. And that's. That's eh. Regional Director. Aaron Pinto. Didn't. Oh. I'm here. That of. That need been. Kim Howe. Lila June Johnson. Hi, and and Tony. So she. He's not a regional director, Sharon Pinto. But then me. Twenty third. Counsel. I'm here. The Navajo Nation Government has no authority over allotment. Then eh. Do I don't eh. I don't be hard at the. Indian country jurisdiction eh. Our authority is only through six thirty eight contracts. So then eh. Six thirty eight contracts on police protection, public safety, judicial, social services, and somewhat on. So then eh. Of course, quite good. That's all. Allotment discussion. You see. Were using political statements. Of course, eh. Uh. Could on. Department of Interior. But. You can't. You know, it's low. You have no dis- jurisdiction. He didn't need it. Uh, let's have a proper response. Of course, quite good that eh. How Joe about when I send over. Then I. I don't quite get that. Um. You just need. He could outside buffers. Could eh. I see. Then I. Oh, we can not. Eh, the. The health and the safety. I don't. I want to. I want to. Uh. Bonus. The. Allotment. Please. Sign in. Like eh, didn't. Not be. And so I'm. So sure, me long. So I'll eh, but then the. Of course, that. But really. It made it to where. People had large. Large cash. And the one thing that really, really made it. A very, um. Public issue. Because. Queen eh. And you also read the front page of Navajo Times. I want to. Eh, she. They're me. I'm hard. So. So she. And eh. I want to. I know. She's. I'm be. It's now. It's also. They're. Had a. This eh. Eh, the. That's all. That's all. He tried to. Of course, quite good. So now eh. But eh, quite good. That. But yeah, eh, no. Then I'll eh. Eh, what. Eh. Been nah. It's. Now eh. I can't. So she don't. I need it. It's. I don't. Which now. They see. You get. At my last count, there was twelve unsolved homicides. In this particular, uh, case, we're. I'm. Ceremonial and spiritual leading eh. The FBI has increased. The reward to ten thousand dollars if somebody will come forward to say, we know, we know something. Out of. Which now eh. Twelve other unsolved homicides. So this. Other related. Aspects. The dealing, uh, the bootlegging as well as. The spread of. Drug dealing. Whether it be marijuana, whether it be, uh, methamphetamine. I don't have eh, Fentanyl. I don't. I see that. I hope eh, yeah. Hand sanitizers. Seventy percent alcohol eh. You mix it with Kool-Aid or other, uh, ingredients. So eh, they. It's longer. And, you know, decision making. Capabilities of. Indisarray. And that. Eh, what's it. Or that he get. Cause shit. Had eh, just like all across the reservation. Quite good. Home. Home site. The. That's. Had eh. She. They have gates. But even then. There's still that aspect of firing. Over the heads or over homes to intimidate. I even nah. Quite good. Now, yes, it. I'm that. I see him there. So eh, I'm she. So. It's special. The only thing eh, it would jump us. Well. I. I was. And I agree. It's hard. Meaning bullies. But eh, I try. I don't try. So. I'm glad. I'm on the. I can go. I don't eh. I'm. So. Eh, the. Then I. I'm she do. The. How Joe. She. I'm. I need oh, let's. Eh, it's. Net done. Yeah. And so that's where. Uh. We take it, uh, upon ourselves to try to give, um, issue and a voice. To the ones that would say. Uh, the. Back in the. Oh, oh. It's disrupting. In one of the. It's split families. It splits communities. Fracturing of the earth. Is causing the fracturing of relatives. The fracturing of communities. If the earth was in good health, the people would be in good health. Eh, what. Oh. But I see. Oh, let's. I don't eh, yeah. The main intent were of the allotments was to Christianize. Eh, it's. And eh, la. Not on. None. So that's where we're at. Of course, I get. There's still a lot of our relatives that still hold on to the land. Even though. The destruction, uh. Where they've made pipelines, where they've made roads, where they've built the well path. Their range units. They reduce. And the Senna. You have see. That. I'm. Queen eh. Eh. I feel. That's all eh. Uh. Sure. In eh. So eh, you have the. They come. These these people. Do. I'm. But then. Our range. So I'll. They. It's come. From the. They. Quite good eh. I'm she. They could she that. Man. I. I'm not. It's. Eh, that's. But quite good. Oh, you're. But also. You see. Then I eh, ask for closing statement. I don't again. Um. As oh, she. I'm. So she. It's. Quite good. It. I have. See, she been nature. But will have. Uh, reaction. So. Uh reaction, do lto e. Di kwaegi bran kiya thieegi shi, anasro shishto li. E chot a e, chato be hasi do li. Sekiro shidene. Dina, a, sana, a kwaegi. Atao e, a ke, ni chidini do li, mchadaholsa'egi do, i la ado, um. Hasi, di shi naanegoi, chato. Um. Ya hada'tsi. Unlsu, do shehe.
Akusila, shehe sunna, honorable Chairman Ben Osso, koro closing statement indla egi. Koro shi e, ch'andhondolni, ndetla honaideskes no Mister Charlie Heleben yena'ideskes. Mister Charlie Naideskes. Attenya. Akusila, sunantano klenegi. Honorable Members of Resources and Development Committee. Ado Chairman Daniel So, sunna. Ado Samuel Sage, Brandon. Veldes, ado Mario Tensio. Ado ndeta, Mister Andrew Charlie. Ado sto, eto Arviso, Laura Jesus. Lorraine Raphael, chadahayso'tzigi shehe. Ado Mister Richard Begay. Aegis na hatzotle, chot a, na nishinsan do nshell. Chot a channe to'di, chot a na nishidi to'di, dena bebe ol insbedin no. E nshell nahalnahto'di, khon, nasasabentcho'egi, chodaho, ero khon, tachodi gannonahas, adonor bayanishteki egi. Ba kewin tsinta go. Akor. Si dena, nohsenegi na ahol shisco. Chi e, sahna di tle'sto', sa'ara chadahaystigi shi. Ah, kwito' a. Nehech'in chadahaydo tzepe'sto'. Ahla, dena neitla, aneltcho. As ant ego. Ne'la eh, to'be, kichin yeltke'ni la. Akor. Ta. Na yuzi do'binna ke'oh, klenegi shidana, a'la tis nosenegi. Beso'egi e, yaha, di nehech'in salhagi. E ajo, nehech'in kuli'igo e do, deno'tsista, dohni'igo e, yaha, be, be, beinhot'i ro nasco, ncha'alchshindi. Belik edo legel aji ek, da tlaro lehi nasu. Da eskhato lehi elnigo, e bayastke'to' banchninne. Tachuko e di, chot a nshell chazanaegi, ti, akahdasni'igo, chot a e ba t'holno na nshillna. Dohnido, bik ech'in nosen. Endeta, e. Ekwi tsin satxan de e yaha, chot'sago e be'gato'ni. Tachuko e yaha. Aki'ende be'gah, a'stlat sin sekan'go lto be'gato'ni. Akor la'ko, nabikiya do tchihigi cholo. His ani dahonnes, nlinichi ye, ye sa'asalni'la. Bizaat asa'go ye des e. Di nehezazibedin, neniki e, nshi'de, tiro bit'sari ek, khatan'igo e yaha. Ye des e zasto. Ado ndeta. Na'idekshidiki e, kaleitao e Aztec ruins, Samo, Sam, Salmon ruins, Mesa Verde. Endeta, Canyon de Shei, do Navajo Mountain, kaleitao e do, bina'altke'ta, no'ra na'idekshid. E khon, dena be kayah, nshell nahstago. La'ko nehech'in nahhot i shidana nohsenegi. Anichipa ah nosanah tasolni'egi. Koylti dena na'ispeta. Belakana enhill, idi'tixti, det ati'a'khon nshell. Ande ye go ta'echi'opat, wo xin jo'ne'so. Oh chot e, ndeta nani'tlenegi, t'ati'ende. Oh nani'tl'oro t'ati'li'yltke'la. Akor di nshellahhot ehegi. Do ati de, beni'ya khon, di khyeda, na gaye ch'indahnaalke, has'ago Washington D C, ne'go di O D C, khon, eskhyeda nshidetni'igo. Do ati de yaha, beni'ya khon, di khyeda, shaba'ah nosan. Ni se'thin has'aji ye go, anaholt egi, so beni'ya di khye. Ho wandana'ba ho bagana da'at den, nehesala'so, ha'bahatjop, barahajopaga bagam da'at den la. Endahna'sya da'abahrahajopago nda'khyela. Endeta, ti dena banahtzo bakhagwo, le'tso hatahyske'ndt e, atohijo'hasht e rahlnehta. Ba't e chonogo ne'la eh. Akoda't, ehegi la'ko e gisa'ade, na'tani eteje ho wandawa yeje ho wan has'aj. Haitao shi t'hat'anne, zannes do, chi he'at'lo'ixi. Da etla. Oh chot e, ndina'tani da'chilnenegi e bitch'ahadadi'tzitono, da iti'khan'ti, beso' kote iti'kell. Elnigo nshie'thin beni'ya so khon, ta dekhye to', ahat e xin chaz'ago lto. E bitch'ahadadi'tzhi, elnigo e ohon dekhye. E kwaegi nchaba'ah nosan. Er'a ni dohne'as'ahke. Tahonohya'ba hadahayso'tzii ti de. Nehts'is chot a, ta dini. Endeta, chot a dena be ch'anahto itha'na. Ninety one years old, bana'chay go't ati'hayulanson, koro Mister Samuel Sage yaha'tzii. Aisi nshi'at eho dena da'ahalni'ar bana'chaylanson. La'go beni'ch'ah'ishtii ti de. A'jin hech'az'aj. Akor. Ti de. Hait a'ego shi. His ani bedin nenegi it e yaha. Washington, na'tani, yes, a'salni. Obahonizin, akon sanash'tahok atxat elle, ti beni'ya. Deh, xin bitch'ahadado tzehnda nshidetni, sa'ya be'gah, nehech'ahadadi'tzhi, hnda nshidetni, bishisahna deitle. Ashonk akoro Mister Richard Begay, ho baldek, khye chato'ara hadautsi, chot a'ego e, dena bebe ol insiki, chot a banhot. Banhotolz'ano xin yaha'dautsi. Ahla ye enni ye go. Aegis e, anee dini'igo, shidana nohsenegi. Nahosan ba'ahwe'li'ya dini'igo gogo. A e be itzinn, anee dohno. That's the challenge. Beni na nshidetshnenegi, shidana nohsenegi do, sunant a. E kui shilchaz'ago, dingo, chapter sonil go bana'ax'age. Onlenegi. Es'tla'na'chayda'ani shi. Gold King Mine, walge'ego, na gaye silver tinda, de ben taha'hotso'da. Bo'setschogo ba ihoa'ade, de tlaro nhitchahna. Ako ha'axi, dena chahadi'tslar o chahadi'tlar onaganju. Denek edetlehegi it e ge'ego, yastke'akor. Washington y'tne'ekin. Washington yotzi hi'de' nizan go yastke'ho da nshidila no. Da'ni'igo, ya'da hashkha. Akor bela'ja e, na gaye. Nahow cost, North Dakota de, she's t'hyi, be kayate. Ado. Be'sna'ao ti de. Ati'ni'ya, itzehet no. Dena ho, nshidana'ko ke'asna. Ado etchallato itzahna'zo. Aku, aku deni'cheyah bakhad, nshillahhot, ehegi lato do, a'xi ba'ahonitzin dalte. Ado e ha'axi t'ipis ndas, nle, in North Dakota de, ha'axi ajo, n'ti'nalkirado, na'alsor be ts'ezze, bakhad, be la'jeni. Eda'ali'ago, hon dan dek'obara hane'akode ina. Kujeh tuitcho, Gold King Spiel, Gold King Mine Spiel. Aten. Haida, ado t'ipis atni na'ade topanho. Haida, ado aren'chan'cha'haskhyeda, na gaye bitshin'thyi, neheka'adi'ja. Ado nshidini de. Wada'ahil, e o lchichin nadailneshdi. Native people denhede, nenegi, t'erero be, asa'itle'ta. T'eraten. Ye go ts'ilze. Ni she'ta'azdhingo, bek i'ada'zdiddin. La'go be nehech'e'anahot i shidana nohsenegi. Akot i regi, koro ani, shidana. Nachashtki, shisizigi. Hait a'la e ti, hash'tedi'ilni'so be sa'asitzi do lehi, nshiride, shni'ishinde a'tan. Do, do be'gata be asa'asitzigo. Ahla to'aske'tego, ntsi khe'ta ti, nshillchaz'aj egi. Nteh. Ashin kwait'ahoda. Ado, da xin lenha'alchshin, da xink eda'achirado, nshohijo'as'aye dan lin do lehi. Alchunan nshli'ro kujeh, ani la'go ba'ahoni zen, Washington inhols inhigi. T'era ba'ohla budget ni'ga do, nshichin kwile'ta. Alsosana eighteen sixty eight e, lto'tanero i kehali'ira. Aniltchon nshilbajosun, se'ta ti ne'kero, kijoba'go, di nehitchahna, nshihigi, nshitchahn'tsna'wan, ndeta e yaha'la'ah, nachat oltsi nde. Anelt eh, ato nshichin kwile'ta, o la na'ela. Akoda't, ehegi it eh, ti itzil. Nahat'ahagi, ani ban si khe'sko go xint e yaha. Nasco niha'alchshin bana'la, chot a la ti nahat'ahagi hash'teil'ila. Koro, sunant a Honorable Vice Chair Walker yaha'tzii. Asha'ani hinchen nahat'ahagi bik eh'gos e chait, a' e indeed Washington de na'tani, egi, hushne'beri di ni. Edo ni'satsa. Bik eh'anel'ingo't e yaha'ara bitch'eh, shana'egi, chato, atxati'indahaljundje, ndanhede'ni, asa'ke'ltke'ta, ndanhede'ni, akoda. Ado aren'chan'altahosta e chait a. Nhedana'el'la tis nlinegi, o bit'ah'tat el'chali, dan nshichin la'aj. Na'tani nchay kwen de chako Canyonje. E ni na, e cheh'anna. T'era a'st'at. Ke'elnigo, khonhol'jux. E she binna e, chot a. Ekhe'ta, nshidana'idi'il, si'ti ni'ro di'ch'in kwil'adenva. Ati'ohon dati'khatan'askhan. Anilt, ehe, e ohon dekhye. Da sheenaghi do lehi, arbel. Akor di chot a'ego e, ashon'rishtana'eni nshidetshni'ro lehi, adahna'nohtson. Achatsa dosson, nihinand a' batsa dosson. Ban da ayoh, nshida korebit'ana'hol'jux. E she nshinand a'ra do lehi, gixi, koro, kexi ba'na'at yo'ni. Ta da she anshindede shwa'shida nosan, cha'dahuisi. Aha'ohhot e do nosan go, e anshin noht ego bayastke'gon, chahatzotlo, shidana'banand a, da dosse'ha'ot asa. Ado shehe a'nosco kui. Echi'khon shilchonoxonegi do chot a. Ekhe'ta ha'sid, ne'do, as'atan'go koro sunant a, nhisht'at go khon zahao ol kidnla. Ekhehe a'nosco, ak'eshi ahundi, ni'to, a'nosco digen shilthaholno'ro lehi, ekhehe. It is currently two forty nine, a'kirona wachin, nazna. Ah'aljenitzi t'habkesedahz'okhoshin. Akor recommendations, egi she, chot a ba'asahna'ani tli'ro lehi. Di nehech'aholt, takoshi, anis'hos, edanha'atxan de, sap be'gato'lehi, so we'll have another follow-up meeting. Ekheho a'nosco hakona.